Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Daly. I'm the proud mayor of the great city of Tallahassee. I would like to call this meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission to order. It is Wednesday, September 21st at 3:00 in the afternoon. It is my honor and privilege to recognize Reverend Father Robert Loughlin of the Holy Mother of God Greek Orthodox Church here in Tallahassee to provide our invocation. Father, thank you so much for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen, our invocation.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to start out. We say, you know, we have a beautiful festival, Greek festival, for whole communities to gather. And then I have to remind people in a joking manner, we also have a church. You know, it's a beautiful thing. Let us pray to the Lord. Oh, Lord, help me in silence to find peace, not just emptiness, and suffering to find meaning, not just agony, and knowledge to find wisdom, not just information, and routine to find order, not just boredom, and order to find purpose, not just the expected, and daily life to find surprises, not just conformity, and prayer to find you, not just my own desires, and change to find promises, not just threats, and opportunities to find possibilities, not just problems, and sin to find forgiveness, not just guilt, and problems to find hope, not just despair, and leadership to find direction, not just power, and challenges to find trust in you, not just personal insecurity. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, thank you so much for the invocation. As you can probably tell, I'm a big fan of the Greek food festival and enjoy it. It is one of Tallahassee's finest, and we appreciate the congregation and the whole community coming out as well. Okay, we are going to have a great meeting tonight. We have a couple items on regular business. We do have the public hearing scheduled this evening, so we will definitely break for the public hearing at 6:00 to deal with the budget. And then if we are not done with the regular business of the day, then we will come back and we will finish. As I like to start all meetings, let's all join together and set the example, not only here in chambers, but for everyone that is watching at home and across the globe, the Tallahassee City Commission meeting on how good government operates. And let me go ahead and address the white elephant in the room, Commissioner Williams Cox. I know I've got five hours till the Earth, Wind &amp; Fire concert starts. I am going to run the best meeting that I possibly can, but obviously, I know, all joking aside, we will spend as much time as we need on all of the issues today. But what a great day, what a great day in Tallahassee. All right, do we have any agenda modifications, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we do. We've got one item that's added to your material. It's item 1203. It's the approval to finalize negotiations and execute TLH lease and development agreements with Burel Aviation Tallahassee.
Excellent, colleagues. Do we, do you have any comments on the agenda modifications? Any questions, clarifications? Okay, excellent. We have two presentations today. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor, first and foremost, the presentation on Good Neighbor Day. I would like to ask John Baker with Neighborhood Affairs, City of Tallahassee, to please come and join me at the podium. I believe we also have with us today Shawna Smith from the Greater Appalachia Ridge Estates. We have Mike Brazin from Benton Hills, Mary Kay Falconer from Benton Hills, Maisha Mitchell. Well, we've got the whole team, all right. Maisha Mitchell from Fritsch Town in Griffin Heights. All right, come on up. Kenny, good to see you. Deborah Lawson from Woodland Drives. Anybody else that I'm missing, come on up. I said, Kenny, yeah, yeah. All right, ladies and gentlemen. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, proclamation. Whereas research shows that knowing your neighbors helps create a safer, cleaner neighborhood that offers an increased quality of life, and whereas neighborhood and homeowners associations provide the most foundational means for residents to get involved in civic life in their community and know their neighbors, and whereas the city supports the creation of neighborhood and homeowners associations and has provided staff and other resources to support and facilitate their development, and whereas the city annually recognizes and celebrates the contributions of its citizens, neighborhood associations, and homeowners associations in enriching the lives of their neighbors through the City Neighborhood Awards Program, and whereas the city's Neighbor of the Year Award recognizes the outstanding contributions of one exemplary resident who has gone beyond and above in demonstrating the spirit of neighborliness through acts of service, kindness, and compassion, and whereas residents that have participated in the city's Neighborhood Leadership Academy have become outstanding ambassadors for the city, helping connect their neighbors to vital services and programs, and whereas neighborhood leaders faithfully provide voluntary services to enhance their community and help their neighbors, and whereas the city supports innovative programming addressing neighborhood safety, neighborhood planning, neighborhood recognition, neighborhood leadership, and much more, and whereas developing relationships with our neighbors can help overcome loneliness, depression, and isolation, especially amidst the ongoing pandemic, and whereas being a good neighbor fosters vibrant communities, and we know to have good neighbors, you must first be a good neighbor yourself. Now therefore, I, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize September 28th, 2022, as Good Neighbor Day in the City of Tallahassee, and call upon neighbors and homeowners associations and residents to join each other in observing National Good Neighbor Day by hosting and engaging in activities and events that promote neighborliness and build community. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, John Daly, dated September 21st, 2022. John Baker, am I presenting this to you? All right. Thank you and your team. Y'all do an amazing job. All of our neighborhood friends that are here today, thank you all so very much. John, a few comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Only have four pages, Mayor. Check that out with your hands. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Neighborhood Affairs supports over 265 neighborhoods across the city, and each of these neighborhoods are neighbors who are working to support their neighbors. They're not doing it to be recognized. They're doing it because they love each other and they support the community and have pride in the community in which they live. Standing here with me today, the mayor has already recognized several of the neighborhood representatives that are here. And as I think about good neighbors, I think about many individuals across this community. I think about the lady in Crawfordville Trace who has committed herself to keep her community clean, and you will find her many weekdays walking up and down her streets, cleaning up trash and picking up litter. I think about the lady in Benton Hills who have established a late women's fellowship to connect women within the community. I think about the neighborhood president in College Terrace who during the pandemic established drive-up, walk-up opportunity to meet with neighbors in his driveway. I think about the neighbor again in Crawfordville Trace who has raised money and enough to establish a fence around a sinkhole in our community. Across this community, we are replete with many individuals who are good neighbors. And Mayor, we appreciate this. Commissioner, we appreciate this. We appreciate the opportunity to work with neighbors across this community to demonstrate and to show their love for Tallahassee. We are Tallahassee proud and glad to be a part of this community.
Thank you. Would anybody like to provide? Please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Regan-Figley in the Woodland Drives neighborhood. And what I have to say is this, a good neighbor is a better neighbor when there's collaboration with Neighborhood Affairs. John Baker contacted me after Hurricane Irma to say, how's your neighborhood doing? Are you guys okay? And that was a beginning of a collaboration that continues to this day. So if you're interested in advancing your neighborhood, the people at Neighborhood Affairs are absolutely fantastic, and I applaud them. So I hope you'll join me for just a second, another round of applause. Is that okay, Mayor? I love these folks.
Shall we get a picture? Come on over here.
Mr. Mayor, while y'all are assembling for the picture, I would like to say that I'm proud to have been one of the founders and, I guess, longtime president of the Tuskegee Neighborhood Association. I can attest to everything that's been said here today. We, as a neighborhood association, were able to save our neighborhood from development as well as other issues that we had when we were not organized. And so I want to thank all of the neighborhood representatives that are here because I feel you, as they say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, as we transition, I see my neighborhood association president in the audience. She's always here. So if she would just wave, Indian Head Lehigh Subdivision. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know you changed. Last email I got didn't tell me that, but anyway. Anyway, she's always here.
That's wonderful. And Commissioners, I know you joined me, and we've got the best Neighborhood Affairs Department in the United States. And John Baker, you and your team do an amazing job. Thank you all very much. At this time, I would also like to invite Kay Meyer of Big Ben 211 and the board, any members of the board that are here with us too, to please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, September is Suicide Prevention Month, and I would like to present to 211 with the Big Ben this proclamation. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the 211 Big Ben National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of the mental health and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to encourage conversation about mental health, suicide warning signs, and to empower people with prevention resources. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 to 14 and 25 to 34 in the United States. And whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States each year, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily, and whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas Tallahassee, Florida publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement, and whereas 211 of the Big Ben serves on the front lines of a crisis that needs this community's full attention, as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health, warning signs for suicide, and actions we can all take to take care of ourselves and others in our community. Now therefore, I, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Month. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, John Daly, dated September 21st, 2022. And while this is a serious topic, I want you to join me in thanking 211 of the Big Ben for the amazing work that they do in our community. Tori, I'll present this to you, and I'll turn the microphone over. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Daly, and thank you to the commission and everybody here for acknowledging Suicide Prevention Month. My name is Tori Greer. I'm the president/CEO of 211 Big Ben. I've been with the agency for almost five years, and it is an honor to serve 211 Big Ben. A little bit about our agency. We provide 24/7 suicide prevention and crisis counseling to this community. We provide 24/7 information referrals and connections to community services within Tallahassee as well as our eight-county Big Ben. We also answer the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which is 988 now, three-digit number for the Big Ben. And I want each of you to know that there are resources available in this community through 211, 988, and our partners with the Mental Health Council of the Big Ben, and through the City of Tallahassee, which supports our mental health navigation services and many of our 24/7 services that we provide. So I would like to leave you with this. If you are struggling, or you know someone who is struggling, know that there are resources here that can help you through 211, by calling 211, texting 898-211, chatting with us on our website at 211bigben.org, or reaching out to 988, which is another access point for suicide prevention in this community. So again, thank you to all of you for acknowledging this month of suicide prevention and awareness. And I also encourage you to take action every single month of the year to take good care of your neighbors and yourselves. Thank you.
No, sir.
Do we have any presentations or appearances by other governmental entities?
No, sir.
Okay, we are on the consent agenda item. Have any consent agenda items been pulled from the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem properly moves the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on City Commission item 10.01. Mr. Cook.
Mayor, item 10.01 is a staff request and mayor recommendation for an appointment to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. Gabriel Landry is recommended for approval.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Move acceptance of the recommendation.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Is there, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 10.02. Mr. Cook.
This item also is for appointments to committees. In this case, the Tallahassee Leon County Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise Advisory Committee has two at-large seats that are currently vacant. The recommendation is approval of George Johnson and Tracy Cohen to fill these seats, which will mean all four of the city's seats would be full upon approval of these appointees.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues?
Move acceptance of the recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick comment, and I will of course support the staff recommendation here. I emailed Mr. Cook about applications. I just think it's a best practice that we always have provided to the commissioners, everyone who has applied, even when there is a staff recommendation. So I just wanted to make that comment, and hopefully that'll be incorporated in the future.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook, can we do that, please?
Yes, sir.
All right, any further comment?
One question.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Were there multiple applicants for these seats?
There were several applications. We on this board and any others, our board and committee application process is open at all times, so at any point in time, our website will tell applicants that their application is valid for a two-year period, after which they would have to reapply. So we may have individuals also who are interested in serving on a given board but are able to identify others. So of those multiple applicants, I couldn't tell you without further research whether they'd already been appointed to another board, continued to have interest. You know, some of them might have been as old as two years, but there were multiple names available.
Commissioner William Cox.
So, Mr. Cook, could you just provide where on the website, anyone who's interested in applying for appointment to any board, where they would find it on our website?
I think the easiest thing to do is go to talgov.com. On that website, if you'll enter in the search bar, citizen advisory boards, it will bring up a couple of choices. Choose the one that says citizen advisory boards. It'll take you directly to a link that allows you to see all of the many opportunities you have to serve the city. There are 30 or so boards that have appointments from citizens interested in a variety of things. Some of those you'll have to qualify for. I think one of our boards may have, as an example, require you to be a contractor. So I couldn't serve on that board even if I were not a City of Tallahassee employee. But all of those options are available. You can see who the current members are, which ones are appointed by individual commissioners, et cetera. So all that information is available, talgov.com, and our citizen advisory boards.
Thank you. And let me just also offer that the county has a comparable opportunity as well. So if you're interested in serving on county boards, as I have in the past, that's where you go to their website and look for those advisory boards. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor with a motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 10.03. Mr. Cook.
Mayor, this item is brought to the City Commission to acknowledge the appointment of Malik Gary to the Citizens Police Review Board by Commissioner Matlow. As you all know, you each have a seat to which you appoint an individual. This is Commissioner Matlow's appointment is brought for your acknowledgement.
Great. Any public comment on this?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, third time's a charm, hopefully, unfulfilling this position. I want to thank Mr. Gary for his willingness to serve and make the motion for approval.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on Introduction of Ordinance, 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11.01 is Introduction of Ordinance Number 22-0-27, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Blutstown Street, south of Park Lawn Street, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-27, and set the first and only public hearing for November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers of City Hall.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. The recommended action is simply the introduction of the ordinance, but I'm looking for direction and comment from my colleagues. Commissioner Porter.
I move to introduce the ordinance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 11.02. Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.02 is Introduction of Ordinance Number 22-0-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Southwood Plantation Road, south of Appalachia Parkway, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-26, and set the first and only public hearing for November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers of City Hall.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, the recommended action is simply the introduction. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized?
Yes, I move that we introduce the ordinance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second by the Mayor Pro Tem? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 11.03. Madam Attorney.
Item 11.03, Introduction of Ordinance Number 22-0-25, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, southeast of the intersection of Capital Circle, southeast, and Woodville Highway, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-25, and set the first and only public hearing for November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers of City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, recommended action is simply to introduce the item. Commissioner Porter.
I move that we introduce the ordinance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter and seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have any more introductions of ordinance as Madam Attorney?
No, we do not, Mayor.
We're on Policy Formation and Direction, 12.01, Gun Violence Disruption Programs. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll recall during your budget process this year that the commission unanimously directed staff to include $1 million a year toward the efforts related to gun violence. And during that discussion, there were, there was a recommendation from staff how to componentize that investment. And you asked that we pull the plane up a little bit and kind of scan the U.S., around the nation, and what other cities were doing, the best practices, those examples that we could find, as well as summarize what's happening in Tallahassee. And at your last meeting, you know, I told you that's where we were, and we've had a team effort to try to summarize that, not in too much long form, but with enough detail where I thought it was informative for the commission and the public to understand the different approaches. They're not of all the same size and shape. They have different approaches and different objectives, all aimed at, no pun intended, all aimed at gun violence. And so that's the agenda item you have today. Let me recognize the team. You're going to hear from two members of the team, but it was a team effort to kind of talk to a lot of people around the country, do the analysis that we could, and again, summarize it into a format where we felt like it could be useful. The team includes Diana Gallego, Brian Vandenberg, Givante Swinton, and Dominique, excuse me, Dominique Maddox. You're going to hear from Givante and Dominique in just a moment. They'll walk us through the presentation. It's thorough. We'll try to move swiftly through it, but we wanted to hit the high points. And I think it will step you through the thought process that really was revealed in the research, I think, that was compiled, and that communities that have embarked in these efforts beyond what they would do normally in their policing or community engagement is that there's an approach, there's an identity of community that's established early in that, in terms of what, how do we want to achieve this? Is it through law enforcement only? Is it through engagement with individuals? In our case, I think you'll find the theme and some of the things that we have done. This discussion was very full in 2014, and things have developed from that, like our Tempo program, like our Neighborhood First program. And so we wanted to give you that full picture, and hopefully we can share that with you tonight. And certainly are looking for your feedback in terms of direction you want to head. You've had a lot of community input. I know you're going to get a lot more feedback tonight, hopefully somewhat informed by the agenda items that we have. But that's what we have in front of you. We've purposely found this meeting to give adequate amount of time. We knew there'd be a lot of community input, and we're looking for a lot of good commission direction. So I just wanted to tee that up. I'm looking forward to Givante and Dominique. They've put a lot of hours into it, and again, I'd recognize Diane and Brian as well for their work. And then finally, our departments, including And then finally, our departments, including TPD, Parks and Recreation, Community Housing, and others have contributed to this item. They were not the architect of it. This isn't their recommendation. They contributed to the information that's included. So that's what we have in store. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to pass it to Givante. He's going to lead us off, and then he'll hand the baton to Dominique.
Great. Givante, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, appointed officials. I stand here, it is my pleasure to present this information.
Givante, I'm going to need you to speak up just a little bit more into the...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Good. It's my pleasure to stand here and present this information to you. We as a team have spent countless of hours gathering reports, data, you know, talking to different departments, talking to different folks, just trying to figure out, you know, the best way to present this gun violence. This presentation will outline an agenda item on gun violence. We'll touch on gun violence as a national issue, some of the root causes, national trends, different models, approaches, right, our local efforts, right, and some of the local gun violence report that's been in the past. I can say for myself, this has been an eye-opening experience, to see gun violence as a trend across the nation and to see how different communities have combated gun violence, responded, right? I think City Tallahassee has a very unique approach. We have a very integrated approach, right, across our departments, using our resources, right, our expertise. I will say too, right, from looking at different communities, there is no uniform approach to gun violence. So this next slide right here will just let you know how we're going to go through the presentation. I'll speak on gun violence as a national issue, different models and approaches. Then my colleague Dominique Maddox will come up and speak about gun violence, reports, local efforts to address gun violence. Gun violence is a national problem, right? We can see that. So on this slide, this shows the cities with the highest homicide rates per 100,000 people across the nation. Now, this slide talks about the surge in gun violence, right? Prior to the pandemic, as you can see, 2011 leading up to 2015, the numbers are not as high. From 2019 to 2020, there was a 35% increase in gun violence across the nation, and that increase is slowly trending up. From 2021 to 20, from 2020 to 2021, there was an 8% increase, about 21,000, 21,000 different gun fires, firearm homicides. So we know that gun violence is a national issue, right? We know that the pandemic played a role, but there are different underlying factors that play a role in these, in gun violence as well. Some of these root causes are income inequality and poverty, housing insecurities, underfunded school and public services, lack of opportunity, and then just easy access to firearms. So I'm going to highlight three of these root causes. First one being the income inequality. We use something called the Guinea Index. All this data that we have came from the 2020 U.S. Census. Zero is perfect, right? There's no income inequality. One is the maximum income inequality available, right? These are the top 10 states, top 10 cities across the nation with the highest income inequality, right? To give you a little bit comparison, the national average for income inequalities is .415. All these cities on this list is higher than that number. Next, we'll speak on poverty rates. Prior to the pandemic, the U.S. saw a decrease in poverty by 30%. In 2020, in 2019, there was an all-time low of 10.5% of poverty across the nation. In 2020, that rate increased by 11.4%, right? And so this is not something that Tallahassee has been immune to, as we can see, compared to where we are for the City of Tallahassee and where different other cities across the nation are. Now, this one, I think, is important because we're, we know that the target age for gun violence is that 16 to 24 age range. We see that Tallahassee has one of the highest graduation rates for the city across the country, right? These are some of the lowest state cities across the country with the lowest graduation rates. This just give you an overview of where we are in Tallahassee and where other cities are. Right? Next, I will discuss the model approaches and programs. Most of these models and approaches have been adapted by several different national programs, national models that I will speak on, right? And so some of these common models and approaches are focus deterrence, problem-oriented policing, federal-local collaboration, coordinated case management approach, directed patrol officers, hotspot identification slash action research, public health and office-based approach. Now, I would like to walk you through these models. Focus deterrence. This focuses on a particular crime. It works, it's an inter-agency working group formed by law enforcement, social services, and community organization and partners to create a response to offenders that are continually involved in these violent crimes, right? How do they do that? They find those at risk of being involved in these violent crimes. They hold an intervention meeting, right? Provide those social services, those of who want to change. Have the community members provide ongoing support. That's, the community support is twofold. That community support is providing support to law enforcement to see, these are the people that's committing crimes in my community, and I want to help you to figure that out. At the same time, too, it's the community providing support for those people that want to get out. We see you, and we want to help you. And then the last piece is enhance of law enforcement for that person or those groups that are constantly involved in these violent crimes. The next one, problem-oriented policing. This model concentrates on crime, right? Similar to the focus deterrent, this model focuses on the causes of it. So some of the, what are the root causes? And they use, they use that to reduce, right? How can we use these causes to help reduce crime, right? Explore the situation, collect and process different types of data, analyze the problem, and develop a plan to help with these root causes. An example of this would be our Neighborhood Watch Program. A next one would be the local, federal, and local collaboration. This provides an advantage for local law enforcement to work with federal law enforcement to have better access to intelligence, to be able to help have access to better technology, better knowledge, to be able to help solve these crimes. I think we're witnessing this right now with our real-time crime center. Another one is the coordinated case management approach. There are seven effective steps to case management. Engage, assessment, planning, implementation, monitoring, review, and analyze. This allows those root causes to be addressed by connecting those that are most vulnerable and at risk with education, employment, transportation, and other social services. Tempo is a great example of a coordinated case management approach. Another approach would be direct patrol officers. Fairly simple, adding more officers in the community to make them more visible, whether they're in car or on feet, right? They are at the places where most of the crimes happen, and they're able to respond quickly. Another approach would be hotspot identification slash action research. This uses crime analysis to locate the crime, right? Similar to the direct police approach, this allows them to see, right, using data, where are these crimes happening the most? What type of crimes are happening the most? And how can law enforcement, right, use their resources on these small pockets to be able to solve these crimes? And the last approach is the public health and office-based approach. This approach allows for our medical professionals to be able to help, to be able to help, right? By, if someone comes to the hospital, they're able to alert law enforcement to prevent those retaliation efforts, right? And so here's a list of nine successful evidence-based programs. All these programs are either one or a mix of these different approaches, right? And based on your direction, we are asked to research and bring these back. And so I'm going to highlight two. Group violence intervention. This is designed to reduce street group violent crimes and gun homicides. This is a partner with law enforcement, community members, and social services to engage in those that are active in these violent crimes. GVI requires additional police resources. For example, if you are, if you are a repeated offender and you have a parking ticket, they're going to go after you. If you're, if you're associated with this offender, they're going to go after you because that's what they do. Group violence intervention. Another one I'm going to highlight is choose to change. Choose to change is a coordinated case management approach, heavily impacting those youth affected by gun violence, using a wraparound approach that offers them different social services, also therapy. This targets ages 13 to 18, right, that face those different challenges within their community, whether it's trauma from the gun violence or gun homicides, right, justice system involvement, or school disengagement. And so we created this matrix that shows, right, on one axis, you'll see inclusion of case management, high and low, police involvement, high and low. So using these nine different approaches, we plotted these. And as you can see, there's a cluster in the corner that is high case management and low police involvement. You have something like GVI, who is high case involvement and high policing. And so I'm going to now turn the presentation over to my colleague Dominique Maddox. She'll speak on the local gun violence reports and local efforts.
Dominique, thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Tallahassee, as we know, as my colleague has said, has not been immune to the rise in gun violence that we've seen across the country. Over the past decade, as a community, we have collectively made consorted efforts to tackle this issue, and I am going to briefly highlight some of those efforts that we have implemented as an organization, but as well as within our community. Some of our earlier initiatives date back to 2014 with the formation of the Community Leadership Council on the Gun Violence, CLC. You may recall this was a citizens group representing various areas of expertise across our community. In 2015, CLC delivered a report on gun violence to the City Commission. The data revealed that black males ages 18 to 29 made up the majority of offenders and victims of violent firearm use. These findings were later reaffirmed, as we know, by the Leon County Sheriff's Office Report Anatomy of a Homicide, and most recently, TPD's 2021 Annual Uniform Crime Report. The CLC report, along with others, has helped generate a dialogue on how to disrupt gun violence through a community-wide approach. So out of these reports, it stimulated conversation, which spurred the creation and implementation of numerous strategies and programs like the ones that you see presently. This has included the formation of the Public Safety Collective, a forum where law enforcement agencies can meet and share and strategize on best practices, the launch of the Neighborhood Public Safety Initiative, which, as you know, is a citizens-based initiative designed to give residents the tools to help address public safety in their respective neighborhoods. The development of our Neighborhood First program, which you know has been fairly successful as it has helped communities such as Bond, Griffin Heights, Frenchtown, Providence, and now Southsides, help them develop plans for their communities. To date, 6.4 million has already been allocated for the Bond Neighborhood First program, and 6.4 million has also been approved for both the Frenchtown and Griffin Heights Neighborhood First plans. And we know, of course, Tempo, which has created pathways for disconnected youth ages 16 to 24. To date, it has served 2,300 at-risk youth, and it's, which has exceeded our strategic plan at targets, and is continuously maintaining a zero citizen rate among its participants. And then there's also the funding that has been put into place to host a community resilience initiative such as the South City Built Community. This program is a combination of a development of a quality mixed-income housing with the creation of cradle-to-college programs for youth that promotes education, health, and wellness. Now, Commissioners, these programs were intentionally built to incorporate some of the principles of those national models which we have already discussed, such as coordinated case management, problem-oriented policing, and the Cure Violence Program. Overall, as an organization, the city has taken an integrated approach to addressing root causes of gun violence. This is reflected in our city's five-year strategic plan by which we have intentionally incorporated strategic targets that focus on crime prevention and as well as some of the root causes of it. We have over 45 targeted initiatives that are geared towards this issue. We have also implemented several youth engagement and community resilience programs across our city departments. Rather than them being concentrated in one single department, you will see that part of our strategy is basically incorporating them across a lot of our departments, such as housing and community resilience, parks and recreation, neighborhood fairs, golf, and TPD, just to name a few. And we know a lot of these programs, right? So some of the programs have been Tempo, the Tallahassee Emergency Assistance Mobile Unit, and TPD's Youth Advisory Council, just to note a few. But of course, as well, this is not an exhaustive list. We want to make that clear, that the agenda item provides only a sample of those initiatives that, as a city, we have taken to provide a holistic approach to youth services. Some other aspects of this has included our community centers, which offer after-school programs to help engage youth. The Palmer Moreau Teen Center, Community Connection, the city's restorative justice program, which focuses on teaching youth nonviolent communication techniques, and is operated out of the Palmer Moreau Teen Center. And also, TPD has a partnership with the Leon County Schools on the statewide Handle with Care Program. This program aims to ensure intervention and support to those students who the police officers have identified as having experienced a traumatic event such as a crime scene. But in addition to the programs that the city runs and operates, there are numerous efforts taking place in the local community, both grassroots and organized, to support at-risk youth. In the item, we have included just a handful of those, such as the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Ben, Omega Lamp Lighters, Capital City Youth Services, and as well as the programs offered by our higher education institutions. Many of these organizations either directly support gun violence prevention or provide wraparound services that promote early intervention, personal development, and educational attainment for youth. We also know that part of tackling gun violence, though, requires addressing human service needs at large within our community, such as, so chronic stresses such as job, food, and housing insecurity can destabilize homes and adversely impact youth. And so you have directed us to provide funding for human services programs through CHSP. And so within the item, you'll see a list of those agencies as well. So just to recap, Commissioners, the information in this item has been provided at your request to provide you with models and approaches that have been implemented across the country, as well as programs and approaches that are currently operating effectively in our own community. Greater success appears to be associated with programs that are tailored to the local context and has been implemented consistently. The city, as an organization, has been engaged in assessing and combating the root causes of gun violence since at least 2014, probably longer, and has implemented some successful programs that are based on the underlying principles of some of the models we've discussed today, such as coordinated case management. we've discussed today, such as coordinated case management and problem-oriented policing. This is obviously a complex issue that no singular organization can tackle on its own, and it cannot be resolved overnight. However, as a community, which I hope the item reflects, is that we have taken several great strides already by leveraging our collective resources. All of this information is for your consideration and discussion today. Staff is seeking your direction on the one million set aside to address gun violence, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yvante, Dominique. This is your first time presenting before the City Commission, correct? You both did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. And I know that you and the team have put a lot of time into your presentation. You did great. Before we go to public comment, are there any questions of clarification that we want to ask the team? Okay, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I agree. Excellent presentation, excellent, very clear. And you may have said this, but I just know that there is a program that's in TPD called Show Cap. Am I correct? Right? I'm looking.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if it was listed in, in this, but if, if not, we wanted to make sure we included. I just happen to know a little bit about that program from the community side and the impact that it has had as well. And I also want to note, I saw the Omega Lamp Lighters listed there, but most of the Black fraternities and sororities all have mentoring groups. We just need to know who they are. I know my sorority has, we have a couple of chapters, so each one of us have mentoring groups. And the other fraternities and sororities. And we're fortunate that Aknan Thomas, I don't know if he's in the room, is the president of the National Panhellenic Council, where all of us are under that umbrella. So, that too is a resource for things that we do to keep our kids engaged and out of trouble and getting them the help that they need as well. So, I wanted to just add that to the other things that are happening in the community as well. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, clarification? All right, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, how many public speakers do we have on this item?
At this point, we have eight who have signed up to speak.
Okay.
All in person, none virtual.
If you would like to speak on this item, please fill out a speaker's card. We'll hear from everybody. Just turn into the clerk's office. Mr. Clerk, walk us through.
Mayor, Commissioners, we, as I said, have eight who have signed up to speak. Each will have three minutes to make remarks to the City Commission. There will be a light in front of you that will start off green and then will turn yellow as your time nears expiration, and then red. I'll also try to give you a heads up when you get close to the end of your three minutes. Our first speaker will be Yolande Porsho, followed by Michael McBride.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Yolanda Porsho. I live at 421 East Jennings Street, Tallahassee, Florida. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One of them is that African-American men, boys, age 10 to 19, according to, if I'm going to get it wrong, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry also have seen an increase of 60% in suicide. And that's really important to me because I, I'm concerned that so much of our attention goes to looking at African-American men and sometimes families from the perspective of pathology and not the systemic stress that they suffer. And so, one of the things that is so heartbreaking to me, I never hear people talk about the school-to-prison pipeline. The state of Florida has one of the most active school-to-prison pipelines in the United States. And that is an extraordinary burden on Black mothers, on Black children, on Black boys. I want to live in a city where Black boys and Black men are treated gently and kindly and not just with penalty. The last thing I'll say is, last year, I went to a meeting with the ministry, the, what is the name? I'm going to forget. The Capitol Area Justice Ministry. And I was feeling so down. A friend of mine just said, "Yolanda, just come, come with me." And for the first time, I heard something. It was like the Christians say, "The bomb and Gilead." They said that part of gun violence is our unwillingness to give children civil citations instead of locking them up. Who wants their children locked up? Not Black people.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Michael McBride, followed by Claudia Blackburn.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael McBride. I live at 124 Mill Branch Road. As you might have been recently made aware, I was at the meeting in the mayor's house. I went as the president of the Florida Restorative Justice Association. Since the executive director was unable to attend, I attended to make sure restorative justice was in consideration for the funds. The hard work had already been done in the memorandum of understanding, and all the city had to do was step up. What I found was everybody in that meeting was there for the same reason. They wanted part of the money to support their cause. The conversation started with a feeling that everyone was competing for the same funds. But as the conversation went along, it became clear to me that everyone there was doing what they could to reduce crime, a single community-focused goal. Please note, these grassroots organizations are the practitioners, the doers, the boots-on-the-ground, already making a difference in Tallahassee. I was an unqualified spectator in this realm. Now, this might shock some of you, but I am an old white guy. While I have been directly impacted by gun violence, I am not in the demographic that is most impacted. These grassroots organizations are. In the conversation, however, it became quite evident to me that they do not trust the system. We have not allowed that. Theirs are the voices we should be hearing and not hunting for solutions elsewhere. The policy document being presented here is a wealth of information. It addresses models from elsewhere and national statistics. What it overlooks are these grassroots organizations. It presents an incomplete picture of the true local efforts. Most glaringly, it omits these grassroots organizations that are already embedded in the parts of the community where they are doing the most good. We do not need a model from another city and hope that we can plug and play it into Tallahassee, leverage what we already have. Use the Council on the Status of Men and Boys that is led by an amazing young man who has already proved he can make a difference in the lives of those in the demographic most vulnerable. He does not know I'm saying this, so my apologies to Royal, but allow him to build a Tallahassee-centric model that leverages these established organizations, the ones already making a difference in Tallahassee. Give CSMB the ability to subcontract with these grassroots organizations to dispel their opinion of the system. If we can fund these groups to incrementally increase their impact, then collectively, they can make a huge difference. Find a way to leverage the organizations that are already in Tallahassee, already making a difference. The organizations run by the grandmas and the pastors and the freemen formerly felons, and those in the neighborhoods most impacted. Be thoughtful, but please be bold. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Claudia Blackburn, and then Ed Clark.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Claudia Blackburn, 2923 Share Road, Tallahassee. I am with Temple Israel, and we are a member of the Capitol Area Justice Ministry, and I am personally affected by gun violence in many ways. One way is that I live on the edge of the Macon community, next to a large apartment complex, and there have been two shootings there in the last few years, including one homicide. I joined the Gun Violence Committee soon after I retired from the Health Department, and I wasn't looking for another job, but this has kind of turned into one. And that's doing justice in the community, which means pushing for the policy changes that are going to make my community safer and more loving. I'm not a Tallahassee native, but I have been here now for about eight years, and I've worked with many of you over the years, and I know that we have similar values. Gun violence is a deep-seated problem that is the symptom of other community problems, as was pointed out by staff. Many of the young men who initiate gun violence have been failed by our current public policies, by law enforcement, by the justice system, by our schools, our faith communities, by social services, and others. We have failed them because we haven't worked together towards saving their lives. They have not really been our collaboratively, our collaborative focus. By no fault of their own, they have fallen through the cracks. Unfortunately, even with the very hard work of all of the agencies that were named this morning, that's the status quo in Tallahassee. They're still falling through the cracks. The Capitol Area Justice Ministry is saying to you, our city leaders, let's do something different. We trust, respect, and need the good, hard work of our current street teams, our social service agencies. So, let's adopt a framework called Group Violence Intervention that will stitch all of these together as local players, schools, police, families, social services, the faith community, in a fabric that focuses on saving these young people's lives, both the victims and the initiators. It's the right thing for our community. It's the right thing to do for our young men in the streets. And there's a place for everybody to be part of this framework and to be focused on making a difference.
You have 20 seconds remaining.
Don't just take our word for it. We sent you information about GVI two weeks ago. This morning, we sent you a proposal. The Capitol Area Justice Ministry is asking that our city hold true to its commitment. We really appreciate the million dollars in the budget to fund an evidence-based strategy. We just want you to adopt GVI so we can stop the bleeding now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ed Clark is next, and then Otis Young.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Ed Clark, 425 Gate Drive. I'm sorry, I'm Dr. Ed Clark, 425 Gate Drive. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the commission, and also concerned citizens. My name is Ed Clark, and I'm a public health scientist and also a gun violence subject matter expert. I'm trained in program design, development, implementation, evaluation. I've worked in that capacity over the last five years with the Florida Department of Health, as well as the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC, as well as the National Association of Chronic Disease Directors, NACDD. I rise today to say a little bit about gun violence from my personal perspective. I'm both a victim and a perpetrator of gun violence. I was raised and socialized in a culture of gun violence in Miami Gardens, Florida, better known as Murder Gardens. I came to Tallahassee back in 1985 to play football at FSU, where one of my friends, Pablo Lopez, was murdered on September 13th, 1986, on campus. We both had come to Tallahassee in an effort to escape gun violence, but clearly, we did not. That event changed the trajectory of my life, needless to say. From that time forward, I have endeavored and devoted my life to figure out why we behaved like that and what I can do to change that and keep other people what we had experienced. I support Capitol Area Justice Ministry in this issue and on this issue. I joined the former TPD Chief of Police, Michael DeLeo, back in 2014 as the Chair of the Subcommittee on Research and Development for the last iteration of a Gun Violence Council here, where we worked to do pretty much the same as these young people that presented did, to assess many different gun violence programs. And we landed on looking very closely at Cure Violence. We actually worked to bring Cure Violence here. They gave us a presentation, and it was determined at that time that Tallahassee didn't have a gang problem. So, Cure Violence wasn't the right fit for us.
You have about 35 seconds.
Okay, so let's cut to the chase. I'm very much in support of group violence intervention. And the reason that I am is because I've looked at many of these programs over the many years of my professional work. And what that program does is basically bring forward a framework to tie all the things that we're already doing together. I'm familiar with a lot of the work that's been done in Tallahassee. I support all of the work that's being done in Tallahassee, but we're still ending up in the same place. I think we owe it to ourselves to adopt a framework that will allow all of our efforts to be focused in one direction under one umbrella.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Otis Young, and he'll be followed by Jeremy Block.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Otis Young. Address is 8231 Ball Moreau Drive. The congregation that I serve as pastor is Kingdom Life Tabernacle, and our congregation is a part of Capitol Area Justice Ministry. I'm a person affected by gun violence by the students that you see on the left and right of me. A person affected by it. I grew up on the west side of Orlando, Florida. Mom and dad did not have a high school education. It wasn't uncommon to see bullets flying in the nighttime, and sometime, we had to lay low even to go to bed. So, I'm a affected person by gun violence. I dedicated my life to making a change in some of the same students' lives of how I grew up. And so, to the left and to the right, you see students from Kingdom Life Preparatory Academy, and one of my dedicated staff members here. We've had recently 87 shootings in Tallahassee thus far, again, 87. I'm doing the work. I don't mind doing the work. My dad taught me to work. He said, "It wasn't eight to five, it was sunup to sundown." Don't mind doing the work. I've been doing the work for years, for 20-plus years here in Tallahassee, making a difference. I'm not new to it, I am true to it. My involvement with it is when I get a call from one of my students that something's going down on the south side. Kingdom Life Preparatory Academy is there. Something's going down on Holton Street, and they can't sleep. Pastor, I need somebody to come. We're boots-on-the-ground, and we get there. We're there to meet the need. And so, I'm not talking from a philosophical perspective, but I talk passionately about what I live through and what I experience every day. At Kingdom Life, we provide a safe utopia for students that come from quote-unquote disadvantaged backgrounds to feel safe and for them to grow and develop. Prevention is going to be an important part to curb the gun violence over time. And at the same time, we need to interrupt with what's going on in the streets, not tomorrow, but right now, by adopting a citywide strategy that connects our schools, law enforcement, local services, churches, and families together. GVI strategy will help us get on one accord, each one reaching one, and reaching these young men, these young women in the streets. Our streets, we can't do it alone. One can put a thousand in flight, two could put 10,000 in flight. It's better when we do it together. The Capitol Area Justice Ministry asks you that you remember your commitment to the community to fund a proven evidence-based interruption model and for you to remember why you made that commitment, to stop the violence now and save our children. Now is the time to do something different. Adopt GVI so we can stop the bleeding now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Is Jeremy Block. And the next speaker would be Stanley Sims.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Block, 1109 East Sixth Avenue. And you all look very familiar. I'm very sorry to be here because I'm talking about a new phrase that I just heard last week. It's very salient, and that is, I'm just going to go after the low-hanging fruit. I'm not going to get caught up in too much information. You've heard me before. I am an advocate for the development of a gun buyback program. And it has not been addressed since my first presentation a year and a half ago. Here is a perfect opportunity to show good intention and good PR for our commission. You're going to have instant results. You can absolutely try all the PowerPoint presentations in the world, but as long as weapons stay on our streets, we're going to have gun violence. And if we can get even the smallest number of them off with the cooperation of the commission, with the cooperation of TPD, it's worked in other places that were not named on the PowerPoint. It worked at Boynton Beach. It worked in Gainesville. It worked in Volusia County most recently, where the sheriff's department had literally, in Volusia County, 10 locations to turn in weapons. When you're talking about assigning five, excuse me, a million dollars a year to combat gun violence, I think it makes sense to set aside the smallest proportion of that money to buy back guns. buy back guns. There will be an incentive for people to turn them in, even though I have been told by TPD staff that gun buybacks don't work. I've been dismissed summarily. We haven't tried it. It's been 2016 since the Sheriff's Department tried it, and he said it was kind of this okay, it was bad, it was not good. They had a lot of issues. Well, the issues would disperse with more activity. You tried it once, it didn't quite come together properly, try it again. Don't give up at the first attempt. It worked in cities, not Detroit, not Denver. It's a possibility here in our community, especially in light of all the work staff did.
You have 20 seconds.
Let's follow it up with something that's realistic, something we can see a reaction to and a results for almost immediately. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims, followed by Whitfield Leland.
Your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon. I'm Stanley Sims at 1320 Avondale Way. And I'm not going to rehash a lot of what's there. I want to just get directly to the cake. Number one, our citizens deserve a process that's fair and transparent. Let's start there. And we haven't started there. Mr. Mayor, I thought it was you tainted the process when you held secret meetings at your house. Now, if you want to welcome me into City Hall, you think I'm going down Live Oak Plantation Row and a dog at your house? Who's telling the truth about what happened at that meeting? Talithia Edwards, where she clearly told WFSU how you had decided with the group? Because we know how you put your thumb on the scale. And then we look at who is presenting this item on the agenda? Your former Chief of Staff, who's now our strategic policymaker? We need a process that is true, that we feel we can invest in. Now I've got that off my chest, let's go to the next thing. I love, we talked about the Cure Violence Program, Mr. Matlow. We turned that down when Anita Favors was our city manager. And what we're saying and what I'm saying is, I understand research-based programs. And I'm quoting this, and y'all could get me. One thing former Governor Jeb Bush taught me, if we don't measure, we cannot hold ourselves accountable. I get that. Dr. Clark, I get that. But because of the calamity, of the lack of trust that we have currently here with our Tallahassee Police Department, we can't take one where Tallahassee Police Department takes the lead on this, because we just suffered a big blow. We had a Navy SEAL who was convicted of a damn war crime, training our law enforcement officers. So that ain't going to work. But what do we need? We do need a combination of two. Let me give you a name. Y'all knowing, Tim Mosley drives the raggedest pickup truck in town.
You have 30 seconds.
Name of his organization? Less fortunate, it still matters, but he makes sure anybody hungry he sees gets some food. Even agencies that are funded by research-based projects, how can we integrate those individuals into this so that we own? Well, it ain't the mayor's program, it ain't Matlow's program, it ain't your program, it's Tallahassee program.
You have 30 seconds.
And then when you see somebody dressed like me, you don't think I'm packing a gun?
Thank you.
Thank you for what, not packing a gun? Oh, my time's up.
We're at 3:00. Yeah, 3 minutes. Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Your name and address for the record.
And Whitfield Leland is our last speaker on this item that I have at this time.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commission, appointed officials. This topic has caught up some traction in town. But what I want to remind the Commission is, we've been already doing this work. When you say being able to collaborate, I do that. A lot of y'all don't see it, but I can pick up the phone and call Chief Holmes with an issue. I can pick up the phone and call Chief Gilmore. I could pick up the phone and call Cynthia Barber. And what can't nobody say is, when it's talking about putting this community together, I don't care how I got to do it, I make sure it happens. At the end of the day, GVI is not going to work for Tallahassee. The Community Roundtable, well, matter of fact, hold on. Peacemakers, could y'all stand up? These are some of them. We got about 25 more, that we took initiative personally, ourselves. And people seen where our actions in our community will reflect dollars in their pocket, and they misused us. I took it upon myself to start the Community Roundtable for that reason only. And since I started the Community Roundtable, I've helped the programs like Link Up Sisters, a program that I've helped build and get to a level of success and capacity with UPHS. Tim, the guy that he says, Tim Mosley, I, that's my guy. Like, it's the people that do all the damn work that don't get no credit. And y'all talking about wraparound, loop. This is our community. We can do this. Give it to us. We're not, and I talked to Ms. Barber. Ms. Barber, everybody come to the table. We're going to need everybody. It's not about one individual. And at the end of the day, when we look at crime, when we look at crime, black folks been living with it all their life. We know how to deal with it. We just don't have the resources to deal with it. And the ones of us that do have the heart, guess what? We don't never have y'all's support. We don't never have the community's support.
You have 20 seconds.
Especially the people that don't even live in our community, that don't see the pockets that we do. But whichever way we decide to go, I want this Commission to know, Capitol Area Ministry to know, the Community Roundtable, all its partners are on board on whichever way we want to go. But we ask that y'all let us
You have 3 minutes.
... deal with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker on the item.
Okay. Is there anybody else here that has not had a chance to speak that would like to speak on this item? Okay, let's move into Commission discussion.
Well, I'll go first.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
In using the template that has been used, I've been affected by gun violence. Just this past March, a year ago, I had a very close family member to take his own life with the gun, and I'm impacted by that. So this is real. I've known young men, young women. We talk about the men, but girls have issues too. Let's not forget that. I've known young men who I've seen grow up in the Parks and Rec program, you know, of my time over at Capital Park Baseball, either shot or gone to jail for doing these things. And to Mr., I forgot his name, who talked about the gun buyback, we talked about the gun buyback in my office, city manager, probably two years ago, it was pre-COVID, we talked about the gun buyback. And with a word from the street, the word directly from the street, because we can talk to people on the street, was that it would not work, because nobody was going to lay their guns down while others still had theirs. So, and if we got any guns, they were going to be malfunctioned and not usable, perhaps civil war. So that's why we did not proceed with that. We considered that very seriously. But I agree, this is our community. I'm not saying that one program works over another. There is no silver bullet. Tallahassee is not monolith. We are a community of diversity. What worked in other places may not work here. But what we've got to do is we've got to come together as a community. And to my church-based folk, I'm a church member too. And I know my Bible says that God told the church to do this work. He didn't give it to government, he gave it to the church. So we've got to work together, church, to make this happen. You have more people coming through your doors or signing on to your Sunday services or midweek services than any corporation, any organization. And we can mobilize and work together with government to solve our community ills. But we've got to stop talking about it and be about it. We've been talking about this a long time. And while we're in here talking and raising sand and fussing and what have you, our kids, our people are dying in the street. They're dying. And so what I believe we need to do, we don't need to, we need to do the right thing, but the right thing does not mean we need to rush right out and buy something off the shelf. My background, as I've told y'all, was information technology. And we call that an off, an on-the-shelf, a cot, something off the shelf that you take and adapt. We don't have time to do it that way. We're going to have to work together and find the best solution for our community. We can't just buy something off the shelf and just say, "Okay, we bought it. Now what?" It can't work like that. I'm the mother of three black sons. My oldest will be 45 next month, and my youngest is 32. To God be the glory, they were not involved in any gun violence. But that's not the case for a lot of my sisters and brothers. I live on the south side. Y'all heard me say that. I hear the helicopter looking for folk who've done things. I can tell you where the hot spots are, because I hear the sirens. So it's not like I'm coming to a commission meeting and saying something, then I'm going to go home and lock myself up and just be excluded from this conversation. No, I live where much of this happens. So I am thoroughly invested in finding the right solution. And I am happy that so many of us are willing to come to the table and let's say, let's unify, let's work together, because pointing fingers is not working anymore. We've got to come together, and we've got to work. And we've heard some very passionate speeches today. I've even seen tears, and it causes me to want to tear up. But we got to stop crying and get to work to save our children. And if we could stop the bleeding now, I would. In fact, if I could have prevented it, it wouldn't have happened. But what we've got to do now, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, we have to decide how we move forward. And I think that with the information that we have received from the very fine presentation, the data that we have available, the work that has been done by staff, and the work that's been done by the community, I think we need to move to workshopping to identify the best possible solution. I don't want to spend money, blow a million dollars, and have nothing to show for it. And then next year, we're coming back with another million, nothing to show for it. We've got to get this right, and we got to get it right now. So I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I think that tonight, we need to agree to workshop this issue with our community, and for our community to help us come to grips, come to terms with what works best. I will go back to what I said in the beginning, prevention has to be a part. But if, for some reason, we find ourselves in a situation, we've got to deal with that. But we've also got to have some way to restore, and we've also got to engage and fuse organizations like Crime Stoppers to help us when these things happen, to find out who did it, so that we can get the help that they need, or we can get the punishment that is needed. And as far as the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline, I heard my good friend Yolanda mention, we at the city have put together tempo, TIFLA, and some other things to try to curtail that. But we can't do it alone. We've got to have other community partners, the county, school, state. We've all got to work together to solve this issue. Thank you for hearing my heart.
Thank you. Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you for the thorough staff presentation. I think one of the biggest takeaways, I think, is something we all know, and that poverty and income inequality is the root cause of so much of what we're going through. And the truth is, a lot of those things can be addressed outside of this funding. You know, addressing those types of issues looks like raising the minimum wage at the city of Tallahassee. It looks like investing in building low-income housing in Tallahassee. It looks like expanding CHSP funding for our service providers, because we know all of our services are underfunded, and if people had more access to them, we'd see a lot of the resulting issues come down. It could look like building new rec centers, expanding the opportunities for children in our public facilities. So I think this conversation deserves to be expanded, especially if we move into a workshop of how else we can target city resources to really impact people's lives. I think a second aspect of it we do need to address is the amount of people leaving guns in unlocked cars in Tallahassee. So many guns are getting on the streets from quote-unquote responsible gun owners leaving their guns in a car that's unlocked. I know there's not, the state doesn't give us too much purview, but what can we do from a public messaging standpoint? What can we do to really deter law-abiding gun owners from letting their guns get stolen because they're not even locking them up? And then, thirdly, a million dollars for gun violence. I think we all agreed, we want to try something new. We want to see if we can make a direct impact quickly. I do think that involves everybody who has a stake in the game locally. So what I've seen on the table so far are a whole bunch of gun violence interruption programs that were presented, a half dozen or more, a recommendation to create a gun violence CHSP category where local service providers can apply, expanding tempo, funding a status of the minimum wage proposal. And I think all of those are worthy of having a real conversation about, to see how we move forward. On the gun violence intervention programs, I don't think we need to spend a million dollars all on one bucket or one basket, but I do think we should look to bring some sort of gun violence intervention program to Tallahassee, working with local people. A lot of them actually do work with local people and just set up a framework to follow. I think, you know, that makes a lot of sense. It doesn't cost a million dollars a year to do, but it would give the framework for people to interact with. I could also support creating a gun violence category in CHSP to directly fund all the nonprofits that make an impact, and have a dedicated process for everybody to apply to go through. On tempo, you know, we're very proud of the tempo program in the city of Tallahassee. And this is a question, Dr. Thomas, not to be answered today, but just for consideration. When we talk about 0% recidivism, and then we see all the youth that are involved in gun violence, how are, where are we missing them? How do we bring them into the program as well? It seems we can never know who would have committed a crime and didn't because of your program, but where are we missing the people who are committing crimes when we look into And then the proposal on the status of minimum boys hasn't been really fleshed out. I just saw a rough draft of it, so worthy of conversation. So in the end, I think, you know, my proposal, my suggestion would be, we decide how to split this up, and maybe that isn't a workshop, but to take a segment of it to look at gun violence intervention, and then take a segment of it to violence intervention, and then take a segment of it to come out with a process for funding other service providers.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem.
Mayor, I don't know if I have a whole lot to say, but I can tell you, this is an issue that's been personal to me as well. I have, and I've told you all this before, you probably don't want to hear it, but I'll say it again. I've lived on the South Side of Tallahassee for 30 years. That's where I chose to live. Nobody forced me to live there. My wife and I decided to build our house there. We have raised two beautiful children there. And unfortunately, just a couple of years ago, we had three murders within a one-mile radius of where we live. A young man was killed on the church grounds. That's 25 yards from my house, the front door of my house, the church that I attend. You know who was the perpetrator? A teenager who lived across the street from us, whose family lost their home because they were on Section 8. And if a family member is involved in crime, you cannot be on Section 8. So his family lost their home. He was a personal friend of my daughter. She was devastated by it. They were athletes together at Leon High School. And so from that perspective, you damn straight, it's personal for me. You know, we can sit up here and talk, and I'm going to tell you, a million dollars, it sounds like a lot of money to maybe me and a few others, because I've never seen a million dollars in my lifetime. But I can tell you one thing, a million dollars is not going to solve the crime issue, the violent crime issue in Tallahassee. So I hope that there's no one in this room that thinks or believes that that's the case and that we're all hungry for this million dollars and we've got the answer to it all. Because if anybody had, if any one person or group had the answer, we wouldn't be here when in 2016, we were talking about this very same issue. I wasn't on the city commission then, or was I? Yeah, I was. But my aide was also, my aide was also involved on that committee, the Cure Violence Citizens Committee at the time. And we determined, because of how specific that program was, that it did not fit Tallahassee. We didn't have a gang problem as they had in Chicago at the time where Cure Violence was initiated. And look at Chicago now. Look at Chicago now, after Cure Violence, after all these other programs that have come and gone in communities throughout the country. There is no silver bullet, if you will. We've all got to work together as a community, and that's what we did as a neighborhood when we had crime issues. We formed a crime watch. We established our neighborhood association. And fortunately, since then, we haven't had those kinds of issues because we look out for each other. And that's what we've got to do as a city. We've got to all come together and work together to address this issue. I think from where we go now, I mean, we can, we can look at, you know, $500 here, $10,000 there. Is that really going to be the answer when everybody's still working in silos? I don't think so. We're going to have to have an initiative that brings this entire community together to come to an understanding. And let me tell you this, it's not, crime isn't just, isn't just situated in high-poverty communities. There is a lot of it. But don't think there is an association between poverty and crime, but there is no correlation. That is, if you're poor or living in impoverished neighborhoods, you're going to commit crime because there are lots. Reverend, what was Reverend Williams, was that Otis?
Young.
Young, Reverend Young. The kids he brought in today, many of them live in impoverished neighborhoods, but I can assure you, they're not involved in criminal activity. So that's something else that I want to dispel. Nor is it confined to the South Side of Tallahassee. You know, every time we get in these discussions, it's always the South Side. Well, it's not. It's not confined to the South Side. Are there issues, as I've said before? Yes. These issues are all over this community. We are hearing now about the incidents of crime that are, that are being perpetrated in the northwest section of our community. There are some that we don't hear about. They don't make the news. My wife is a judge. She signs warrants, hundreds of warrants, a week for crimes in this community that we never hear about. And they're not on the South Side. They're all over this community. And so I think, you know, I think a workshop would be a good thing to do so that we can continue to narrow this down. We've had a lot of fantastic information given to us today that at least gives us a start. I don't know, you know, everybody says, well, you know, we need to stop the bleeding now. I'd be interested in knowing, in these programs, and maybe you all have the answer, these programs that have been implemented in other cities, when they were implemented, what was the impact of those programs? Did they see a 5, 10, 20, 50% reduction in violent crime? And if they did, how long did it take to get there? And was it sustainable? Like I said, look at Chicago. 2016, we were talking about Cure Violence that was being launched in Chicago at the time, and here we are, six years later, and Chicago probably has one of the highest, if not the highest murder rate in the United States of America after Cure Violence. I don't know what happened after GVI in the communities where it was initiated. But I think those are the kinds of things that we need to look at as a community. In terms of how the money is dispersed, as I said, you know, I hope we don't hit people against or groups against one another over this million dollars, because that ain't going to be the silver bullet, y'all, even the $5 million over five years. But I think what we've got to do is put that money where it's going to have the most powerful impact over those five years. And so that's what I would be looking at. And if we did a workshop, I would hope that maybe out of that would come a citizen committee that would look at what could work here in Tallahassee, vet the proposals that address that, and then come back to us with recommendations. None of us have that kind of expertise on this dais, I would venture to say. But there are people in the community, obviously, Doc, people like our professor that do have that kind of expertise and should be involved in helping us to come up with solutions that fit Tallahassee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank our staff for the hard work that went into this item. There's a lot of good information. Although I do have to say, you know, we first gave this direction six months ago, and I wish we had started this kind of conversation sooner. As far as the item itself, I think it's important that we distinguish between which of the measures and programs that are listed are direct gun violence intervention programs and which are more preventative measures, quality-of-life measures, addressing poverty, addressing housing, mentorship programs, and which of them have we actually measured their effectiveness? That is not to say, I mean, I think it was encouraging to read all that we are doing, and we should all be proud of ourselves for how many resources the city has provided and supported, the community has initiated, and oftentimes with, with not a lot of resources at their disposal. I have no doubt that we are making an impact with all of the programs that are listed here, but there is a reason that we are here, and that is because the problem is not getting better, it's getting worse. So I do think we need to, and I think we all agree, which is again why we're here, do something different, do something that we have not done. I had some questions for staff. I don't have too many. There were some recommendations made by the CLC report in 2015, 2016. I know we did not end up implementing Cure Violence, but I was wondering if anything else came from the CLC recommendations.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Deputy City Manager Barber, she was involved at the time and has been an excellent resource, and numerous things were implemented as a result of that that carried forward. Sinta is the expert, if she can share that information.
Barber, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and of course, our appointed officials. Yes, when the Cure Violence model was not implemented, we implemented a series of programs. We started first with a recognition that CPD alone could not address public safety in our community. So we pulled together all of the, all of the law enforcement agencies in our community, the police, the sheriff, the university police departments, FDLE, pulled them together to work on issues of impacting our-
Excuse me, Deputy City Manager, could you pull your mask down so?
I think I'm going to have to take it off. I can't breathe. You want to, you want to see, I hear better, hear better?
Yeah, I hear you better.
Okay, all right. All right, now I've got it. We pulled together all of the law enforcement agencies in the community. And even with that, there was still a recognition that we could not police ourselves out of the issues impacting our community, that there were a number of underlying issues that impact why and how people become involved in criminal activity. So there was the, a real deliberate focus on how do you engage the community? We actually used data, I know that I've heard several times, particularly from you, Commissioner Williams-Cox, about the data. We used the data to tell us where we were having the most problems with gun violence in our community, worked directly with those communities to implement what we call the Neighborhood First Program, which is really based on an idea that the people who live in these communities are closer to it and know what they would need in their communities to better address crime and other issues. So we worked with them to, we identified those communities, we implemented Neighborhood First Program. We've done it in several of our communities. We still have two. We have Providence that's in progress, and then we have South City that we still need to work with. Not that those will be the only areas, because to your point, Commissioner Richardson, that's not, those are not the only areas that are impacted, but the data showed that they were most impacted. Worked with them to develop Neighborhood First Plans, which identified those priorities that while on the surface, it may not sound like that would help deal with violence or gun violence or crime, but they were issues of housing, education, economic development, housing, other types of general services that most of us don't think about, but were impacting those neighborhoods. So we implemented the Neighborhood First Program out of that. Then we also dealt with the fact that we were looking at the age groups, and there was a determination, as you've heard, this anatomy of the homicide. We did that back in 2017, and I have to tell you, the data hasn't changed. The folks who were involved in crime, the age groups that were most impacted as victims and as perpetrators, has not changed over that time, that timeframe. So we implemented our Tempo Program, which directly addressed the issue. There was a correlation between those who did not have GEDs and did not have, had not completed high school, and some level of involvement or engagement with, with crime, whether as perpetrators or victims. So the Tempo Program was implemented as a direct response to, to that. And you'll see that a lot of these programs are very similar to what you were seeing in the models that you're hearing about today. The TIFLA Program, which was modified, we had a summer youth program where kids just came in from all over the community, worked a few weeks in the summer, made a little money, and they went on back to school. The TIFLA Program was upgraded and modified to provide more education, more certifications that they were receiving to help them become eligible for, even if it's food service. I mean, I started in food service. That's what I did as a teenager. There are lessons that are learned. There's opportunity that you gain from working for your own money, working during the summer and being responsible for something, if it's nothing but the french fry line. You know, I did that. I did hamburgers. I did fried chicken. I did whatever I needed to do. So we modified those programs. So the TIFLA Program was upgraded as well. So there have been this, we've not been idle in terms of trying to address it. We've implemented a number of programs along the way. And then there's a whole host of programs that were implemented in the, by the police department. There were already a number of them, but the Youth Citizens, the Youth Citizens Academy Chief, what's the, what'd you say? Advisory Committee, a very active group of youth. I think it needs to be a little bit more diverse in terms of the participants and the part of the community, but those activities are another part of it. All the work that we did to modify programs and upgrade programs in our neighborhood community centers, we spend a lot of time with the kids in those centers and making sure we have programs that address a lot of the needs. We even have pantries and food closets and all kinds of things that we operate at our centers to help children and their families. In the Tempo Program, whether if they need clothes, food, or whatever those things are, we've helped to coordinate a number of those services. You don't know about all of those things. Many of us on the executive team have purchased shoes and clothes for the kids for graduation, for job interviews, and those kinds of things. So that's just some of them. I couldn't name every single thing that we've done in response to that, but those, those are some of the programs that we implemented when it was determined that we wouldn't move forward with, with the Cure Violence model.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. And have we, are, have we measured the impacts of any of those programs on, on gun violence?
We have reported the, and we repeatedly report that, including today, the results of those who participate in the Tempo Program, where we know that many of these kids have already been introduced or had some involvement in crime. We know that as a result of, we would, we would like to say, as a result of their involvement in Tempo, they've not been re-engaged in crime. They stayed engaged. They've gone on to get not only GEDs, some of them have gone to trade schools, received certification, and gone on to higher education. So I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I know that in the Tempo Program, we do capture information like that. If you talk about the neighborhoods and the neighborhood involvement, we do know, and we had this work initially, and I say this, is that when you are actively engaged, there is a direct relationship between the crime in that community. When we started in the Bond community, we installed the cameras, we engaged the community. They were hosting a number of activities. We immediately saw, well, I would say immediately, but the police department and those in the trenches actually doing the work, so it wasn't quite immediate, but there was a 30% drop in crime in that community. You take your foot off the brakes, you walk away, everybody goes back to their own corners, you don't see that kind of progress. So we do know that that program, where we were actively engaged, we included cameras in critical locations, we may have increased, enhanced patrol, not just police patrol, but community involvement in those areas. We noticed that, that's a statistic that I do remember, where we were able to see a decrease in the activity. So I know that if you sit on your porch, you get involved, you're utilizing the infrastructure, whether it's a park, a pond, or whatever it is in your neighborhood, you're less likely to have somebody come and set up in those same areas and involve, and get involved and elicit criminal behavior.
Thank you. And I just want to be clear, I mean, I am really proud of the Tempo Program and the Neighborhood First Program and the other programs. I think they have undoubtedly had an impact, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, that we can't police our way out of this problem. And we know the roots of gun violence and of crime in general, as was mentioned in the item, we're talking about housing instability, income inequality, poverty, underfunded public resources, underfunded schools. And not all of that do we, as a city, have a direct impact on, although sometimes I wish we did because we know how interrelated these issues are. And so I don't have any further questions for you. I have a few more comments, but I appreciate your response. As far as I can tell of the nine programs that were mentioned, two of them are, seem to me to be about case management and, as you mentioned, similar to the Tempo Program. Three of them, Safe Streets, Chicago Ceasefire, and Cure Violence are basically some version of Cure Violence, where Chicago Ceasefire developed into Cure Violence, Safe Streets was modeled after ceasefire. So they're kind of evolving out of each other. So they're kind of evolving out of each other. And we've already made, you know, drawn the conclusion that Cure Violence isn't the best fit for this community because of its emphasis on gang violence, which is not necessarily what we're observing in Tallahassee. Two of them, including GVI, are some version of Ceasefire. Ceasefire, according to my research, kind of evolved into GVI. Some of these programs, I mean, if you read the item, they started in the 90s, they started even before the 90s, and as research has progressed and as we learn more, the programs evolve. And then two of them are not necessarily programs in themselves, but programs that support localities in tailoring to their needs what programs would be most effective. And one of those is the National Network for Save Communities, which works closely with GVI. So if we are talking about different, talking about an evidence-based program such as the ones listed in the item, it seems to me like we are talking about two different programs, one that we've already rejected. That's not to say, and as is noted in the item, there's a lot of overlap between these programs, a lot of overlap and similarities. And I share the concerns about the public's trust in our government and our ability to effectively make change, and whether there is the trust there that you really need to work with our communities. One thing that I wanted to mention, just because the mayor and I and our city attorney were in court yesterday for a hearing on the city's suit on behalf of, for HB1, the anti-riot bill, and the provision about the governor's influence over our budgets. I want to mention this because it is critically important to these kinds of decisions that we make, and I'm looking forward to this continued discussion. I think we need a workshop. I think we need to have more collaboration here from these community groups. I want to talk more about where this commitment to funding, where the funding is coming from, how we're going to really address our long-term public safety and health crises. You know, is this coming? And maybe, Mr. City Manager, if you have an answer, I don't even know if we've discussed this, or if it's already in the budget, you know, is this coming from our law enforcement funds? Where is this money coming from? And the fact that making a reduction in our law enforcement funds, even if we were to transfer this, would put us at risk of handing over control to the governor over our budget, and how significant that is based on HB1, which is a huge impediment to us in making these kinds of decisions and protecting our home rule, right, as guaranteed by the Florida Constitution. So that aside, I would, I agree with my colleagues about having a workshop. I agree that there is potential to fund more than one program. I think it's a great idea to consider and work with our nonprofit providers and those involved in the CHSP process, whether we should consider a category that addresses gun violence. I think that we absolutely need the state attorney, our public defender, other law enforcement officers, the community groups, staff, everyone at the table as we make this And when we have a workshop, or if we decide to move forward with a workshop, I would hope that it is a workshop where we really are able to dig in. I've been to workshops before that are very informative, but that don't have a lot of that collaboration, and not a lot of discussion amongst us as a commission or the community about how we move forward. So I want to hear, I want to give you, Mr. Mayor, the opportunity to weigh in, but if it's appropriate, I would like to make a motion that we have a workshop that takes a deep dive into, personally, into GVI, but also how we can incorporate other community groups into that process would be my motion.
So there's a motion on the table by Commissioner Porter that we go to workshop, and I'm going to second the motion, and I think that this is a great day. And let me tell you why. Because number one, all five of us are on the same page that we want to move forward and positively move the needle in regards to gun violence in our community. Number two, all five of us are on the same page that we need to have further conversations in a workshop atmosphere where we can really, truly hash this out. I am very proud to work with y'all, that we are moving in the same direction. We all agree on the workshop, and I will wholeheartedly support the motion on the table. Any further comment on the motion on the table?
Just a point that I wanted to make. You know, it seemed to me in the presentation that we had and all the models that were presented, there was a significant law enforcement participation. And so whatever we do going forward, I think we should look to the chief-
Very much so.
-and the professional staff that he has at the police department as a part of that conversation, and helping us come to a solution.
Very much so. Absolutely. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
And I would also, I've heard it now a couple of times from a couple of my colleagues about the potential for earmarking THSP funding for gun violence. I want us to be careful of doing that kind of thing, because the nonprofits are working on a number of issues, poverty being what the real deal is. Poverty is the umbrella, and gun violence is just a part of that. We got homelessness, we got affordable housing, we got a number of things. So I don't want us to, I mean, this is just my opinion. When we start earmarking, then we're going to need to earmark something for this area, earmark something for this area. I think we need to look at things globally, understand that, as we've all agreed, that poverty is the root cause. So if we're at the table trying to solve issues of poverty, gun violence is just one factor of it. And I would hate for us to go down a rabbit hole of saying, okay, we're going to have a million dollars over here for gun violence, we need $2 million over here, $3 million. Let's look at it holistically, of where we need to go. And if we end up there, fine, but I think we should go in with an open mind of looking at the information that has been provided, looking at proposals that we have received from the Capitol Area Justice Ministry, the peacemakers and the roundtable, and others who have provided input. When I got this agenda, I sent this agenda item out to a lot of people in the community, and asked, very diverse group of folks, and asked them to give me their feedback. And I've received feedback from them. That's how I came here today, knowing that we needed to workshop this.
Yep.
I knew that walking in, because of the different opinions that I was getting from folks who are not talking to one another. So I want to just add that, just go in with an open mind.
I agree. Motion on the table is May, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, to the city manager, have we provided enough clarity of what we're looking for for a workshop structure, or do you need any additional direction to move forward? I've heard different ideas. I've heard some people agree with what some people were opposed to. Are we looking to hash this out at a workshop? Are we looking to examine specific proposals at a workshop? I'm just trying to get an idea of what it would actually look like.
Let me jump in here. I think it's all the above, Commissioner, and I think we should budget enough time, whether it's a half a day. Really sit down. I mean, we can't talk outside the sunshine, right? We need to create an environment where we can just sit around a table, listen to the public, have great participation, and literally just hash it out. So I would say everything's on the table. Let's just make sure we budget enough time, and so that we can work through all these issues. Mr. Manager, did-
Yes, sir. I think that's fine, and maybe just even the starting point. Certainly, we understand the urgency of this matter, and I think, you know, we've heard it tonight, we've scanned the calendar. So first things first, I think a date probably would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor. We've looked at October 12th. You reserved that day for a commission meeting. I would recommend the workshop at 10:00 that morning, if that's acceptable, just a starting point.
I think it'd be great.
You know, pretty quickly, we could put it out there. I think we have a lot of information. We have a lot of feedback from the commission, and I would ask this. It sounds like there seems to be a desire to continue listening to the public. I'm not sure I hear, you know, the final stages of, maybe we're at a decision-making point. We'll continue to add the building blocks. We certainly got a lot to work with here, but that's what we've heard, and I think if October 12th seems to work for you, we're prepared to bring that forward.
Sounds great. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I wanted to say, for consideration for the structure of the workshop is, I do, we do want to listen, but I think we need to engage. We need to have conversation, you know, when folks come and bring a suggestion or whatever, we have the opportunity to then ask further questions, or even, you know, the folks in attendance ask questions of whatever's being presented, so that everyone in the room is heard. I know it may sound kind of chaotic, but it's kind of like brainstorming. You know, you just, you get it out there, and then you can go from there to narrow down where it is we're trying to go. And I think that that way, everyone feels as though they have been heard.
Motion on the table is from Commissioner Porter. I have seconded it for a workshop, October 12th, 10:00 a.m. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Before we move on, Givante Dominique, once again, great job on your first presentation before the city commission on a very difficult issue. We appreciate it. We're on item number 12.02. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.02 is permitting public infrastructure projects interlocal agreement. This item seeks approval of an interlocal agreement with Leon County concerning permitting of public infrastructure projects, which are located partly within the unincorporated Leon County and partly within the city of Tallahassee. Currently, for a project which crosses the city limits, each local government issues separate environmental permits for the portion of the project within its jurisdiction. Under the proposed agreement, a single government could issue the permits for the entire project. The agreement only applies to public infrastructure projects, road, stormwater, electric, et cetera, by the city of Tallahassee, Leon County, or blueprint, and where the project crosses the city limits. Additionally, city and county would have to both designate a project for one-stop permitting. If a project were so designated, the government with the majority of the project within its jurisdiction is presumed to issue the permits, although the city and county could designate the government, which would serve as the permitting authority on a case-by-case basis. The interlocal agreement was approved by Leon County Board of County Commissioners on September 13th, 2022, and the recommended action is to approve a public infrastructure permitting interlocal agreement.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Move staff recommendation on option one. Mayor?
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem for option number one, staff recommendation. Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your authorization to finalize an agreement with Burrell Aviation Group. You'll recall at your June 22nd meeting, you authorized staff to negotiate with Burrell to finalize the terms of an aviation development proposal. And I'm pleased to report that staff has worked quickly on that. We have a very anxious group in Burrell that wishes to move forward, and we have a final agreement before you tonight. This would result in approximately $8 million of new revenue over the term to the airport, with at least 200, I'm sorry, at least $20 million investment on behalf of the developer. And it's estimated to create approximately 291 permanent jobs, over 250 temporary construction jobs, with an economic impact exceeding $60 million. The price of this is based on a schedule of fees established by the airport that has a market basis. Commissioner Matlow, I told you in error today that the FAA or the federal government would have to also authorize that. That's not the case for this one, so I wanted to provide that clarity. But it is based on the schedule of fees that are otherwise published today. David Pollard, our airport director, is here if you have any questions.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item, Ramona Abernathy-Payne.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. Just comment that I've been in that house for 36 years, and have lived in Tallahassee right at 50 years. All but about three of those years have been on the South Side. In June, I was told the runway repairs were needed at the airport to reduce aircraft flight noise from takeoffs and landings over my neighborhood. I hope that approval of the grants tonight will lead to those repairs, and that the repairs will indeed reduce the noise over my neighborhood. I've been disturbed by planes as early as 6:00 a.m. and as late as midnight. Air traffic at all hours of the day seemed to get worse by the week. I've spoken to Director Pollard, I've spoken to Deputy Director Derwin, and the city commission about my concerns about noise pollution in residential areas, neighborhoods that predate the airport by decades. It has only gotten worse. As development and expansion of the airport continues, I ask that the city emphasize that all agreements address the issue of maintaining quiet in our in-town neighborhoods and respect the character of those neighborhoods, route airport traffic away from our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
That's the only speaker on the item.
All right.
Move staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? I'll just say, I am extremely excited about this item. This is the beginning of the game change. It complements the international facility. We have been waiting decades for this type of activity out at the airport, and this is a very exciting day for the city commission. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. All right. Do we have any other business coming for us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
All right. In the interest of time, I would suggest, colleagues, why don't we go ahead and have the sharing of ideas now, and then we can come back at 6:00 for the public hearing on the budget. Sound great? Mr. Mayor pro tem, start with you.
Yeah, I had just a question of the city manager. You know, there's been issues raised recently about bus transportation to the Amazon Center. Mr. Manager, could you address that and where we are as a city on that issue?
Yes, sir.
Great point.
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that question, just to eliminate any confusion. So that's a year-old conversation. You know, right at the onset, there were conversations with Star Metro staff and others. Christina Perez at the time with OEV was in those conversations involving Amazon as well. And the question was the extension of Star Metro service to the Amazon facility. I'm not sure it's known, but the Amazon facility is well outside the city's limits and service territory of Star Metro, which serves into the city's limits. And so that question was explored. Could we provide service? Star Metro has been very, very consistent that they stand willing and ready to provide service while it is outside the city's territory and limits. And it's not normal. They stand ready and have devised a plan that could be, you know, tweaked and reevaluated, but I think it's a good plan, and that plan would be to extend the Azalea Route that runs Mayhane Corridor out east, extend it the four miles to the Amazon facility. It would require adding at least a bus and some other operational details, and they had estimated the cost of that to be about $1.3 million in startup and acquisition of the bus and the other equipment necessary, and then ongoing operating costs, maybe a little south of $300,000. That was at the time. Those numbers probably should be refreshed, but I think they're indicative. That information's been shared. The way those arrangements work, and in fact, we have a history with Leon County, so this would be in Leon County, transit systems around Florida, and really around the United States, when they go outside of their municipal corporate boundaries, they make arrangements and agreements with neighboring cities or counties to either provide a funding model or some participation. In this case, I think the funding model would be appropriate, and it has, we've got precedent where the city agreed to do that. And it has, we've got precedent where the city agreed to do that in the Lake Jackson area outside the city's limits, and there was a funding interlocal agreement established. So I think the work has been done. I think the understanding of how the service could work and complement Star Metro, Star Metro again, willing, standing ready to execute that service. Then the next step would be a funding agreement with Leon County, of which the Amazon facility is located. So that's, that's where we are today. There's been a lot of analysis, of course, to get to that point and, you know, how's the best way to do it? And so we look forward to any continued dialogue there might be.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I have to tell you that I'm very proud, if I can interject, that I was actually the district commissioner for the Lake Jackson area that pushed forward to get that funding from the county side for that bus route. So the precedent is set that the other jurisdictions come to the table interlocal and help.
And a follow-up, Mayor, would be, Mr. Manager, does in fact, Star Metro sustain itself? Or are there other mechanisms of funding that have to supplement what they're able to generate?
Right.
Thank you. And I totally drove past that, pun intended, on that one. I drove past that unintentionally. Thank you for that. Transit systems are heavily subsidized by their owner, in this case, the city of Tallahassee, wherever you go, with the rare exception of maybe like a New York City-style metro system. They're heavily subsidized. The rider fees, in our case, make up about 5% of the annual budget of Star Metro. So the revenues largely come from the taxpayers of, in this case, the city of Tallahassee, some grants and other contract fees. And so that's why a funding interlocal agreement would be necessary, because it is, it is a service provided by governments and heavily subsidized.
And then finally, Mr. Mayor, I know, you know, because I attended most of the community meetings or community hearings that were being held prior to Amazon coming to town, and there was some talk at those about possibly approaching Amazon itself about contributing to the cost of transportation to their facility. Was that ever, was that contact ever made? And if so, what was their reaction?
If I get it wrong, Abena Ojatayoda is going to help me. She's been more involved in the conversations, but it was. And that was, the O E V, you know, having that contact, we recall O E V being instrumental in recruiting and landing Amazon. And so as I understand it, those conversations were had, Amazon, you know, I hate to put words in their mouth through, you know, several different hands, they weren't interested in financially participating. And so I think that's where it, that's where that conversation ended. I know they're aware of it. I know they participated in the conversations. And as I understand it, they weren't interested.
So there is a willingness on the part of the city that owns a public transportation system to provide the service, a willingness to collaborate with our sister government to make that happen so that those who don't have, who would like to find employment at Amazon but may not have the transportation, to make it available and accessible to them. The issue comes down to how that would be funded.
Yes, sir. Not to elaborate too much more, we've got a very, very long relationship with Florida State University and Florida A&amp;M University, for example. It's the same premise. And we, you know, Star Metro and the team, they can move mountains, but certainly a willingness, I think they stand ready, there'll be a lot of work to do it, but I know they're ready and capable to do it and looking for any partnership Leon County wishes to have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified, because I'd been hearing a lot of talk over the last couple of days about it, and I may, wanted to make sure that the public heard where we stand.
Sure.
On that, on that issue.
Sure.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, I received an email last week from Mr. Delitri Hollinger, a bond resident, him and five property owners on Russell Street, wanted to discuss the idea of renaming Russell Street. Russell Street was named for Confederate Major Albert Russell, and there's interest in renaming it to honor George Calvin Best Jr., who was a FAMU student, Tallahasian and bond resident and civil rights activist. So I would like to make a motion to bring back an item to explore renaming Russell Street.
Yeah, Mr. Manager. Hold on, just a second.
I can provide clarity.
There's been a motion made on the table by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, there's a second for discussion. Now, Mr. Manager, will you please weigh in on the process?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on, just on process, so the county has the authority on the renaming of all streets, including city streets. And the way you have handled that in the past, if you have a street in particular you wish to recommend and support, that would be the action of the City Commission to provide maybe direction to myself, you know, to make that recommendation to the county to travel through their process.
That's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioner Matlow.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kudos again to the city of Tallahassee, Parks and Rec, and everyone who was involved in yesterday's dedication for the Altamis Barnes Park. Beautiful weather, beautiful day for a beautiful person who has done, who has worked tirelessly in our, in our community. So, so happy to be a part of that. So kudos to everyone who's done that. I want to mention that I know we already know that he's a celebrity in the community, but Joe Bullard, I have it on Good Word and notification that he is going to be inducted into the Black Radio Hall of Fame.
Oh, wow.
In a, in a couple of weeks. And I wanted to congratulate him. I know he'll be emceeing tonight for the, you know, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire concert. You may have heard about it. He will, he will be emceeing tonight, and I just wanted to put it out there that we're, I'm very proud that he's a personal friend, but, and a church member, but he's also a community, I call him the community village, the community, the village voice, because he informs and provides us with much-needed information and in a way that we can digest it. So congratulations to him. On September 30th, at 7:00 p.m. at Cascades Park, there will be a free screening of The Race to Be Human. As you know, I've been working with Courtney Atkins, Shonda Knight, Angela Hendrick, the City Manager, Deputy City Manager, Allison Fairs, and others, Michelle Gale, the school system. We've been working on this Equity Tallahassee-Leon Group. And so what we're now doing is thank you to the city of Tallahassee for sponsoring this description to The Race to Be Human, where we're dealing with, going to deal with youth-led initiatives to talk about race. You know, we've been talking about race, we've been talking about the different factors and sectors, and we want to continue this conversation. It is, we're asking that if you have mentoring groups or you have young people that you're involved with, make sure that they get there, it's open to even us, those of us who are young at heart, please come. When I saw the, and I don't, I don't know, I don't see Angela in the audience, but when I saw the little trailer, it, I started triggering, because we've got to make sure that our children understand the complexity of what we're dealing with, because that too adds to the stress in, in some of the things that is happening in our schools, because people don't know how to deal with diversity and inclusion. And so I'm inviting everyone to join us on Friday night at 7:30. I'm told there's supposed to be some popcorn and what have you there for the screening of The Race to Be Human, and you can Google it and find it, and I'm also sharing it on my page. And finally, Mr. City Manager, you know, we, I've had some preliminary conversation, I don't see anyone from the neighborhood here yet, but we've had some preliminary inquiry and conversation about Miracle Hill. We've seen it in the, in the news and what's going on with that nursing facility in that community. And I've had some conversations with some folks on the financial side and some other folks who are trying to do some things. And I want to ask that we, before I ask for an agenda item, I don't want to ask that we have a meeting with some of those interests, some of those stakeholders to determine what, what is it that is going on there? And if it's something that we, the city, can assist with as a part of our neighborhood first plan, if there's anything that we can do to help make that, make that issue a better situation, or if we just need to just leave it be? So if I'd like to ask your office if you could, you know, maybe schedule a meeting I'd like to attend, and I can indicate who, who the people are that I think, based on conversations that I've had, who need to be involved. And if it goes forward, then I will then come back and ask my colleagues to support us in an agenda item to look into this. For those who may not know, historically, the Miracle Hill Nursing Facility has been the place where many have gone in our community to receive care in their twilight years of their lives, as well as the rehab part of it. So if we could see what, what can happen to maybe keep this institution stabilized or get it stabilized or what have you.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment? Yes, ma'am, of course, we'll be happy to do that. And I'd like to draw out, just to make sure it was understood what you said, the Miracle Hill facility is in the Griffin Heights neighborhood.
In the Griffin Heights neighborhood.
And you heard earlier tonight, that's one of three neighborhoods that have a neighborhood first plan with funding, that the neighborhoods have been given a lot of discretion for normally in terms of the city being able to help, because it's a business, you know, at the end of the day, that's a business. There's a lot of limitations in order to do that, but I do think there could be some uniqueness in that the neighborhood first plan exists and that the neighbors of that neighborhood first plan have some discretion. So we'll be happy to meet with them. John Baker, which was, you know, acknowledged earlier, did a great job. He can lead the charge, and we'll see what kind of headway we can make, and we'll be happy to roll our sleeves up in any way possible.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, Mr. City Manager, in our briefing earlier today, we talked a little bit about the Tallahassee Housing Authority and the Orange Avenue development. I was wondering if you had the chance to look into that and give us a little bit of an update. Obviously, since our CRA meeting, we, we discussed the funding that they, the funding gap that they needed, and I was wondering if the county took action or just an update, if you had that for us.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me ask Abena Ojatayoda, I think she's got the freshest information in her conversations. As I mentioned earlier, we've had very frequent conversations with our counterparts at Leon County in this funding. Obviously, I think we all know that the Housing Authority Phase One closed, I think it was a $38 million closing, great information. You at the CRA talked about funding, I believe it was $2 million of, upwards of a $4 million gap. Abena has been working closely with Shinkton Lamy at the county in terms of any coordination on any gap funding, and I think she probably can give us the latest. We haven't heard any action from the county unless Abena heard late today, yesterday, and so I don't understand there to be immediate urgency on it, but, but we are collaborating. Abena, can you add any more detail to that?
Yeah, that's right. We've tried to follow a sequence of inquiries that THA has made. As you know, they came before the CRA first, and so we wanted that process to go along. We understand you've made that commitment to help with the gap. It was originally $10 million. They worked really hard, and they've brought it down significantly to about 6.4 or so. With the CRA's additional $2 million, they're exploring what else they might be able to do. What the county has asked is an independent reviewer, an analysis of their gap. So THA presented their gap to us, but the county has engaged a consultant that also reviews all the requests for gaps to understand that, what is actually needed and to vet it. And so that process is underway, and from my understanding, and actually, Kimball and his team has been really the most actively engaged in this process. I think as of a few days ago, we know that they have all the information, self-service management, to make their analysis. They're looking at October, the county is looking at October for their consideration of that item. They did make a motion to bring it back to them to make a vote. And so we would, we imagine that they would then follow up and bring similar requests to the city as well, and we would rely on the same information to vet it.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to confirm, I assume that their timeline then has been extended, because when they came to us.
That's right.
They had, there was an urgency there. They did mention a potential extension, but I assume that's the case?
That's right, Commissioner. What we've learned is that there was a meeting scheduled with the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, and that is primarily what's driving the deadline. One of their meetings was canceled or postponed, I believe, to later in the year. So that does give them a little bit of breathing room. And what I know they're asking for is commitment at this point, as they go through underwriting and closing of their financial deal. It is just commitments that they make, and then you get into the details once the project begins.
Thank you. And that's it for me.
Excellent. I only have two items. Mr. Manager, would you mind providing us an update? And you can do it via email, it's fine, on the latest park that we will be cutting the ribbon on that includes the cricket pitch? There's a lot of excitement of when we're going to be opening that. And so, I mean, you don't have to do it now, just shoot us an email with an update on it.
Yes, sir.
And then I had a friend, and I was out walking around Lake Ella just the other day, and right across the street from the senior center, there's a plaque. I got a picture of it, I'll show with you later, and it's to a gentleman named Ed Johnson. I don't know the gentleman, but he worked for the city of Tallahassee, and it's dedicated to Ed Johnson for 42 years of service. Bottom line is, can we just ask our Parks and Rec team, next time y'all are out there, check it out, let's clean it up. It might need a new foundation, but in 1988, 34 years ago, the plaque was put there, and I think it's kind of deteriorated. And if we're gonna, we're gonna have it out there, we should check it out and clean it up a little bit. It was brought to my attention.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I have nothing else. This has been a-
Mr. Mayor, on point. It has been said to me by the son of Mr. Lee, the statue over here in Frenchtown, that it needs cleaning as well.
Okay.
In fact, he had said to me that it was kind of embarrassing, because it wasn't, hadn't been kept clean. And so he told me this months ago, and I've forgotten it, but since you mentioned it, I think that if we can add that-
Yeah, let's do some inventory. Yeah, let's do some inventory.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good idea.
All right.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:27. We did a great job. Colleagues, y'all worked really hard tonight to make sure that we stay on target, and we did a great job. We're going to go ahead and adjourn. We'll be back at 6:00 for the public hearing on the budget, and then we'll obviously also hear from the public on non-agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, at 6:00, I'd like to call the City Commission Public Hearing to order. We have six items on the agenda, including the budget. So let's go ahead and get started. We are on item number 14.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of two public hearings. Our city attorney will walk us through the requisite steps. This budget culminates after months of involvement by the commission and the input of the public. The operating budget's $826.8 million, and the capital improvement budget, $205.4 million. Robert Wiggan, which you know well, he and his team and resource management have put this together, they've been the tip of the spear, and if appropriate, Robert can provide highlights before we begin the requisite process.
Robert, you and your team have done an amazing job once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I will point to the far back row, they've got my back, if they'll stand up for a second.
Yeah, y'all, this isn't church. You don't have to sit on the back row. Y'all can come sit on the front if you'd like. It's okay.
Got some of the braver individuals directly behind me. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Commissioners and appointed officials. As the City Manager mentioned, we're ready for public comment for the city's fiscal year '23 budget. It's been developed to continue success in our strategic plan goals. One of those is maintaining staffing levels and ensuring we're an employer of choice, while also providing funding for new endeavors like prevention of gun violence, staffing at the Animal Service Center, and additional funding for the arts in multiple human service agencies. I will clarify that the $1 million in funding for gun violence is unique. We do have an increase in the police department's budget. Uh, this million dollars has been set up separately and transferred to other government agencies uh in preparation for whatever decisions you you reach in October. Uh, the fiscal year 23 budget was accomplished through uh multiple online, in-person, afternoon-evening workshops and agendas with involved discussion. Um, at this time, the next steps are to follow option one, uh, the 10-step process guided by the city attorney, uh, who will step us through the public public hearing and adoption. We also will ask for adopt uh for a recommendation on option two, uh, to adopt the fiscal year 23 funding for human service partnerships and enter into contracts with citizen-directed not-for-profit awardees. Uh, staff is here for questions, should there be any, as we go through the process.
Excellent. All right, Madam Attorney, walk us through the process.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the FY 2023 final budget hearing in action. As you are aware, as a part of this agenda item, there is another recommended action besides the approval of the mileage and budget of the city and the DIA. This is the approval of the FY 23 funding allocations for human services partnerships and authorizing the city manager or his designated to enter into service contracts with nonprofit providers, the latter taking place after the mileage and budget approvals. First, for the approval process of the city and the DIA military rates and budget. Mayor and Commissioners, there are certain things I need to read into the record, and then we'll take public comment on the military rate and on the proposed budget for the city and the downtown improvement authority that staff has discussed with you. After you have heard the public comment and before you vote on the budget, there will be time for your discussion of the proposed budget. This is the second and final public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget. This final hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Friday, September 16th, 2022, in compliance with Florida Statute Section 200.065. Either the date of the first hearing, September 7th, or the the today's date conflicts with any county commission or school board meeting hearing dates. Again, I need to read the following statement into the record. The proposed mileage rate for fiscal year 2023 is 4.1 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8367 by 7.34%. This tentative mileage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mils. Attachment A to the agenda item is resolution number 22-r-26, which states the percentage that the final mileage rate is more than the rollback rate. At this time, uh, it is the opportunity for public to speak on the city's military rate and proposed budget.
All right, Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have on the budget tonight?
I've got seven at this point.
Let's go on through.
All right. The first is Mary Korea, and then Jacob Muldoon will follow.
Okay.
Speakers, as with the earlier portion of our meeting, will speak from the microphone in the middle of the room and have three minutes for comments. Light in front of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem will be green, and it'll turn yellow. And I'll also try to give you a heads up at 30 seconds.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Korea, 599 Brookhampton Drive, 32311. Um, thank you for allowing us to speak on this issue. Um, I believe that the city budget needs to spend more on affordable housing, less money in the police budget, and uh focus on Tallahassee's most uh vulnerable citizens rather than continuing to put, I guess, another million dollars into the police budget. I I think that housing insecurity is a is a direction to health and wealth for all of Tallahassee's citizens and not just the ones that are the most wealthy. Um, these meetings also need to occur and be open to the public at all times when all working-class people can attend, um, not just two times in the month of September. Um, and uh, yeah, that's pretty much all I wanted to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Jacob Muldoon, followed by Elijah Ruby.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jacob Muldoon. Um, I'm not going to give my address. I just wanted to come up here and say a little bit about why I support a people's budget in Tallahassee and some of the faults of our current budget and where we um do better. So I've been here throughout this whole budget process, and you guys have continually talked about how creating a budget is a is a process, and not everything can be funded. And so that's why we have a lot of questions about why the police budget is inflated as much as it is every single year. The police budget grows each year, and that means our community is losing out on resources. Money needs to be taken away from the police budget and given to sectors of social services in Tallahassee. We've seen especially recently that the police will continue to lie to the community, and they'll continue to eat up our resources doing things that we probably don't want them to do, like training with war criminals. And this is done without any accountability, and they lied literally to our faces. And they did this at the civilian police review board, um, which is something that the city has been using as a buffer for real accountability for police brutality. Um, and so we saw that we were lied to then. And I just want to urge you guys, in retrospect, to uh continue to review their annual reports. Um, they'll be having one that's coming up soon, but um they should uh have their one from last year reviewed. It still hasn't been reviewed, and they've continually talked about this, and nothing's really been done. So if you truly care about police accountability and think that this is a route to that, I think you guys should show that rather than ignoring them. Um, also, this current city budget defunds sidewalks and street pavings. And this is obviously a big problem. I lived off of Tharp Street. I've seen people pushing strollers, having to go into the street because there's no sidewalk on either side. And that's just, it's a damn shame, literally. And finally, if we want to end corruption in the city and mismanagement of funds in Tallahassee, we need to take power away from the city manager, especially in crafting the budget, and we need to give it back to the people where it belongs. And this is just one of many, many areas where the city manager holds undue and undemocratic power over the city. Finally, I just want to say that safe and affordable housing for all might as well be the most pressing issue for Tallahassee today. Despite Tallahassee having dozens of unoccupied houses within the South Side, housing insecurity still remains to rise. I urge you to investigate the possibilities of a rent stabilization ordinance. This is something that other cities are doing, and uh it's one of the really only ways that you guys can stop skyrocketing rents without pushing in the pockets of big developers. So uh we need a people's budget now, and uh you guys have an obligation to uh take care of citizens, not big developers. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Elijah Ruby, followed by Stanley Sims.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, so uh my name is Elijah. Nice to meet you all. Uh, I don't know my address. Um, yeah, so I'm here to talk about the people's budget. It's a shame in Tallahassee, um, having millions of dollars go to the police department instead of sectors that could actually help people. It's a shame to have millions of dollars train war criminals. Just uh in case you aren't familiar, Eddie Gallagher trained uh Tallahassee police. He uh chopped the head off of a a live prisoner of war. Money goes to that person to train the police, but not to build housing, affordable housing, so people can live in Tallahassee, be a part of our community, and be a safe place. Money goes to a war criminal that chopped someone's head off instead of sidewalks. Where I live, uh, the sidewalks are terrible. I live by the stadiums, uh, west, southwest of the stadium. I have to walk in the middle of the road just to get to a bus stop because the sidewalks are so bad. The sidewalks are decrepit. The sidewalks are falling apart while war criminals train Tallahassee police. The current city uh, yeah. We need to take power away from the city manager. It is unfair that the city manager, one random bureaucrat, gets to decide where the budget goes to and not the people of Tallahassee that live in this community, work in this community. It's it's a shame. And yeah, we need to defund the police and invest back into the people of Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Stanley Sims, followed by Michael McLaughlin.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Stanley Sims, Mayor. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. And Mr. Cook wore an outfit and shoes just like mine. He told me he wanted one, so.
I'm going to the concert tonight.
Let's talk about money. Money, money, money. I look at this budget, and 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 first, let me say this. I I want to commend you guys for rolling this mileage rate back during some very hard times. So let's start on a good note. Thank you, Reese, for keeping this mileage rate low. But here's the, I would like for some suggestions. And my premise is the county. Who the county administrator has just been acknowledged as the best county administrator that you let Bill Proctor tell it in the whole wide world and the galaxy. But I want to talk about pay, the inequity of pay. You talk about we have the number one utility service, but we don't pay them like that. We won't, our service workers won't get $15 an hour to 2026. You know how many COVIDs they got to dodge to get through that? Because they live in that. You know how many packs of neck bones they got to eat? Because they, chicken would be so expensive in year 26, it would taste like chickpea steak. We need a budget that's fatter all of our city employees, not where some get $60,000 pay raises and some get nothing. And then you tell us, well, the these kids really don't want no money. If you, eh, I don't know one person on the job that don't want more money. Ain't nobody working for recreation. I ain't. Housing, housing. My son's in California right now. They require $4,000 in the bank before you can rent a house. You know what I told them? I'm his daddy, they ain't got $4,000 in the bank. It's hard for us out here. But your budget shields your executives from the pain.
You have 30 seconds.
They get, we keep seeing them get high raises. Why do people who mow our yards say, y'all, if you live through 2026, we'll give you 15 then? Well, in 2026, we gonna need 18. How do I get on the list that the next meeting you have, Mayor, at your house? If you have it in the day, I'll come. But if it's at night, I will not travel Landtation Road with them big old live oak trees at night. I ain't gonna do it.
Thank you for joining us. Our next speaker, please.
Is Michael McLaughlin. Excuse me. And then Regina Joseph.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hello. Um, my name is Michael McLaughlin. I sell at that 100 Cadiz Street. Um, and I'm here to speak on the city budget. And as I and other people have spoken here, I've emphasized that we need a city budget that reflects the needs and wills of the people. We need a people's budget, not, I don't know what we call this budget. Aristocrats' budget, bureaucrats' budget, I'm not sure, not sure. Uh, but we need a city, and we need the city. Um, I know I know you're kind of at the end of the budgeting process here, but we need the city to incorporate the people into the whole budgeting process. Um, I know Reese Code here has a lot of say here on what the budget says, and we need that to go back to the people. Um, also, unlike the current budget, we need a budget that looks to services other than the police uh to address social issues in our city. Like, it's great that you're funding, putting funding toward gun violence, but it sounds like what I heard earlier, uh, that you're just gonna give that to the police. Uh, it's like the only resource you can think of is, oh, we have an issue, we have the police. We need someone to mow the lawn, we'll call the police. We need someone to solve homelessness, we call the police. Uh, there are other tools, and we need to uh use those other tools, or if not, we need to build those other tools as a city. Shouldn't just use the police as a one-size-fits-all tool. Uh, and so, yeah, even if even if this ba- budget today passes as it is, uh, the people are still gonna be here. We're still gonna be here. Uh, our needs will still be here, and they'll still be met. And we'll still need a budget that meets our needs, and we will continue to agitate until we get a people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
The next speaker is Regina Joseph, followed by Shelby Green.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
What I just gave the commissioners, oh, my name's Regina, I live in Tallahassee, Florida. Uh, what I just gave the commissioners um is a photograph of Eddie Gallagher posing with a decapitated 17-year-old that he killed. Eddie Gallagher, so atrocious that his own colleagues tried to get accountability for what he did, for recklessly killing women and children with drone strikes, and trying to cover up that murder. And the only way he was absolved of these crimes was because Donald Trump pardoned him. And so here we are in 2022, and it is obvious that some of these city commissioners and city manager Reese Code, who was not elected, by the way, believe in training police officers to train with this warrior, Eddie Gallagher, training with TPD. For what? So that y'all can send 300 more police officers like y'all did on September 5th? Let's not forget that, when there's 100 protesters and you sent 300 police officers. And I am disgusted. I am disgusted because this morning, when I thought about coming here, I broke down in tears because I know that so many of you support that. And it pisses me off. It pisses me off that y'all don't care about the people here at all, that you can push through $60 million for FSU when people are starving, when there are homeless people, when TPD is arresting homeless people and dropping them off randomly at homeless centers, when you try to get rid of one of the few homeless shelters that exist.
You're at 30 seconds.
You're on the wrong side of history, and you will be in the dustbin of history because you continue time and time and time and time and time again to not listen to the people because you keep giving money to developers, you keep putting money in your own pockets, when there are folks who are literally starving here. And I appreciate all of your fake looks of concern. I know it's, it's very impressive. You're getting Oscar award for that.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you very much.
And yet, who lied? Are you gonna call out Lawrence Revel for lying? Are you gonna call him out for lying? This is what stands with this.
Thank you so much for your comments, if you wouldn't mind wrapping them up. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Shelby Green, followed by Carter Hoey.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. I think what you're hearing in the room tonight is that we are upset at the people of Tallahassee who pay their bills, who decide to come to school here, who decide to live and build a life here, are not being represented on that dais, and we're not being represented in the budget. That's upsetting. I'm upset by the people who had to come here and organize because you guys are not doing your jobs. What happened to civic duty? What happened to moral obligation? What happened to our democracy? It's really upsetting for us to time and time and time again to come here and to be met with blank faces. Are there any emotions inside of you? Is there a human in there? Tonight, again, for I don't even know how many times, I'm talking about the people in Tallahassee who can't afford to pay their most basic bill, their utility bill. How many times am I going to talk about this? How many times am I going to talk about this? How many times am I going to talk about it until something's done? Do you refuse to listen to the people who cannot afford to live here? Do you refuse to watch the news? All I'm advocating for is that American Rescue Plan dollars, 46 million that the city received, to be given to the people. Stop hoarding our money. This is taxation without representation. Neighborhood Reach was a program that helped tens of thousands of poor people in Tallahassee. It became inactive after the pandemic. Why are you not making it reactive again? You got $46 million. Why did you not use it to start the program up again to help people? Coca asked for $300,000 and you gave it to them. Is it because one of you up there is running for reelection? What about poor people in Tallahassee? Give them the money they need to either pay their utility bill or to subsidize the cost through a weatherization and energy efficiency program. Every other utility in Florida has one. Tallahassee does not.
You're at 30 seconds.
The city of Quincy gave their customers $100 credit. JEA put in a temporary moratorium. Tallahassee has done nothing for people who cannot afford to pay their utility bills. Are you not embarrassed? So I'm asking you, stop hoarding our money and give the people what they are due. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Carter Hoi, and then Sadie Carlson.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Carter Hoi, and I live in Tallahassee, Florida. I support the people's budget in Tallahassee, Florida. Money needs to be taken away from the police budget and given to sectors of social service in Tallahassee. The police are supposed to be help to the community, but that is not happening at all. They are trained to racially profile and target black and brown communities, and this is an absolute atrocity. The police need to actually support the community. Something needs to change. And despite the police budget increasing, this problem is not going away. We need, we need a council. We need a connection between the community and the police so the police can actually support the people instead of keeping them down. The police overcriminalize and brutalize members of the city. This is not okay. I fully support the people's budget so we can bring money to things that will actually support the people. The civilian police review board has done nothing. Despite submitting our annual in February, it still hasn't been reviewed. We need an actual connection between the police and the people if the police are actually gonna serve the people. We need a people's budget in Tallahassee that actually addresses the demands of working class people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clark.
Sadie Carlson. And mayor, that's the last speaker form I have. Sadie Carlson.
Mr. City Manager, there's some, is this a city staff?
I don't, I don't believe so. If you could move back. Thank you. I don't have any additional speakers, mayor. If there's somebody else who needs to speak, I can get a card from them later.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah Pierre. I live in Tallahassee, Florida. Usually I come up here and I pretend that you care what I have to say, but it's clear that you don't care what I have to say. It's clear that you don't care what anyone in the city has to say if it's not gonna benefit you and your personal pockets and your personal money. You lie to everybody in this goddamn city and you haven't said a damn thing about it. You lied to us. You told us Eddie Gallagher was just an observer. He wasn't involved in the process whatsoever. He wasn't a part of the process whatsoever. And he's ceding on the goddamn emails because you think we're idiots. That's what you think of the people of Tallahassee, the people in this city, that they're idiots, that they're not worth your time. They don't have to respect the time they put into things. You lie to us. You undermine public trust and police on purpose. And more than that, Chief Revel's response to basic criticisms of his horrendous care when we know this man is a homophobe, a transphobe, and a killer cop who helped murder a 19-year-old boy in 1996 was disgusting. No basic accountability. It's people like you who let people like Eddie Gallagher exist in our city. It's people like you who let organizations like Strong Health, SOF, build a warrior culture and unite States of America, who further brutalize and police people. And you don't know what a storm that's coming for y'all. Y'all are creating more and more George Floyds, more Breonna Taylor's, more and more Tony McDays, more and more Reese, more and more Rahim readers, I think every single day, about how there are people in this city who are cops, who have murdered people, murdered people, and they face no accountability. And they're probably on the same ads and posters you use to talk about police accountability. They're probably hugging kids, killer cops in our damn city because of Marty's Law, because they don't know a damn thing about how this city works. I think every day about how y'all refuse to look at the, look at the civilian police review boards and a report, despite them releasing it in February because you don't care about police accountability, because you don't care about anyone. I think about how there's no affordable housing in Tallahassee, how you refuse to take any serious demand of the people's budget, but suddenly you have the money to give $27 million to FSU, and you have the money to throw $300,000 into Fort Tallahassee for your campaign ads and attack TCAC and me, to personally list me in your articles and then get clout anyway 11 points with your pro-cop candidate David Bellamy. And guess what? John Daly, you're gonna be out of office probably very soon, and if not now, in two or four years. Because you have no basis in the community, because you have no real support, because you refuse to do anything to actually help anyone. That's who y'all really are. That's what y'all really stand for. That's what y'all really care about, lining your pockets and giving yourself your own power. So you might not care what we have to say, but just let me know that there's a storm coming. And one day, city manager Rizgo, who is corrupt, and Lawrence Revel, who is a bigot, will be out of the city, and I can't wait to see it.
Thank you for joining us. Do we have?
I did have one additional speaker, speaker forum, Matthew Vargas.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Matthew Vargas, Tallahassee resident. Thank you. Sorry I haven't been out to join you more than, hopefully more in the future. I think this forum tonight speaks for itself. I think if the city, actually functioning, the city government were actually functioning as democratic bodies, small d, small d Democrats here this evening, you see? And that's a powerful and profound word, and I think that you all recognize that you're representatives, but, you know, the discussion of what actually a democracy is, is very large, and I think compasses things that maybe we lose track of, maybe our representatives lose track of. United Nations, or rather, a number, I think a couple hundred advocacy groups globally in over maybe 75 countries yesterday released a report timed with the General Assembly meeting at the United Nations that said that hunger, acute hunger now globally is 375 million at risk of starvation. Someone dies from starvation every four seconds now they calculate it or estimate it. And the same processes that, you know, are functioning at an international level, which have been functioning at an international level, probably since post-World War II, not, we could say, the beginning of the colonial era, are really dominating, you know, communities around the globe and extend to what we experience here locally. And I think that we need to maybe try to keep this big picture in mind because the population, the people throughout the world are starting to connect the dots and see that, and see that we need transformative change. And, and yet, we still have systems of governance and representatives that by their actions, you know, seem to demonstrate that they don't get that. You know, we have during the candidates' forums recently, candidates gleefully, you know, expressing that they, you know, will take whatever, you know, corporate money, big donor money that they will give, that they can, you know, solicit, you know, to be the people's representative. And it just doesn't add up, you know, it's not, I mean, it's not based on evidence. We heard, you know, basically arguments based on faulty logic that, you know, for
You have 20 seconds.
For why commissioners and, you know, city and county voted in support of the tens of million dollars for the FSU football stadium. It draws in this much money for our community. It needs, or we want to repair it, and the implementation or not of repairs is going to withdraw that money? No, that's just not good logic. And so, you know, we demand, as I think some have advocated for, more transparency, ethics, investigations, including of past decisions.
Your time's expired.
Thank you. And we want the people involved as much as possible through creative processes, ex-officio members of the commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We need to be very creative.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
We have no other speakers on the budget.
Okay. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. At this point in time, we need to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed military rate, which is 1 mil, and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget of $375,812, as presented on September 7th. This hearing for the Downtown Improvement Authority has been advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Friday, September 16, 2022, in compliance with Florida Statute, Section 200.065.
All right. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this?
No additional speakers.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on the Downtown Improvement Authority's budget or military rate? Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney.
At this point, mayor, we need a motion for approval of the city's final military rate of 4.1 mils as reflected in Resolution 21, I'm sorry, 22-r-26, the title which reads as follows. Resolution number 22-r-26, a resolution establishing the military rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, as 4.1 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than their aggregate rollback rate of 3.8367 by 7.34 percent, and provided an effective date. May I have a motion for the approval of the final military rate?
Is there any motion? It's properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
The next step, step eight is to approve the city's final fiscal year 2023 budget as amended and reflected in, in the appropriations, Resolution Number 22-r-27AA, Attachment B, the title which reads as follows. Resolution Number 22-r-27AA, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority and the, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, designating the sources of revenue and set appropriations and provided an effective date, which reflects all the changes to the proposed budget that were previously approved by the city commission. Is there a motion for the approval of the 2023 budget as amended and as reflected in Resolution Number 22-r-27AA?
Is there any motion? Some move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, any discussion?
Motion is to approve the budget? Yes.
That is the motion on the table. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all the speakers for coming out, and, you know, I do agree, I do sincerely agree that something needs to change. I do agree that our budget, and I do want to thank staff for your work and, and for incorporating a lot of the priorities that, that we described. And none of this is a reflection on your work. But I do think, you know, looking at the budget, it doesn't align with my priorities, with our priorities, and I don't think it aligns with, it doesn't do enough to meet the needs in this community, so. I think in the future, and I've made these comments before, there's a lot more that we can do to make the link between public comment and the needs more direct with our priorities and our budget. And I look forward to working on that in the future. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other public comment on the proposed budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nay. And the motion passes 3-2 with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlo in dissent. Madam Attorney.
Now it is time for a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final military rate of 1 mil and a, and a motion for approval of the Resolution Number 22-r-26.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table? Some move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? And it passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Now, if there could be a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final fiscal year 2023 budget, which totals $375,812, and Resolution Number 22-r-27AA.
There are motion on the table? Some move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
That concludes the commission's required actions on the fiscal year 2023 budget for the city of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority. Finally, as a part of this agenda item, there is the consideration of the human services allocation and request to permit the city manager or designated to execute service contracts with nonprofit providers. This is option number two. Are there public speakers first?
Do we have public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
We can move on to item number 14.02.
All right. We're on item number 14.02.
The first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-o-19, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Centerville Road, south of Interstate 10, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-o-19.
Mr. Clark, do we have any comment on this?
No speakers on 1402.
Commissioners.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 14.03. Madam Attorney.
This is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-o-22, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 1-2 of the Land Development Code regarding the definition of golf course and permissible ancillary uses, providing for conflict, severability, and effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-o-22, thereby amending section 1-2 definitions and, and rules of construction to add the definition of golf course to state dining facilities and lodging facilities as allowable ancillary uses with golf course operations.
Okay. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have speakers. Mayor Richard Derobbe is here to answer questions if you have them. Tico Gimbel is our first speaker. Tico Gimble is our first speaker, to be followed by Steve Givens.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tico Gimble, 3065 White Ibis Way, Tallahassee, Florida. Thank you all for allowing us to speak, giving us an opportunity. I've been a member of Kalaran for over 20 years. Golf courses have always had food, beverage, lodging. You have weddings, you have anniversaries. This is nothing that is controversial in any way. I know the Planning Commission staff recommended approval, the Planning Commission unanimously approved, your staff, I think, has recommended approval, that we would urge you to adopt your staff's recommendation and approve these amendments. It's just common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment. I do have a group of former Board of Directors. We all worked to try to save Kalaran, and I think they would all, they would all agree with my comments. So, rather than everybody coming up separately.
Thank you.
Does that work?
It does. Yes, sir. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, I'd indicated Steve Givens, but I believe he's speaking on item 1406.
Yeah. I can either speak now or come back 14.
We'll come back at 1406. I just missed that one. I'm sorry. That's the last speaker I have on this, 1403.
Okay.
Move staff recommendation, option number one.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 14.04.
This is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-o-23, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending chapter two, article eight, lobbyist regulations of the Code of General Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-o-23. At its July 13, 2022 meeting, the City Commission directed the city attorney to introduce an ordinance amending the city's lobbying regulations to prohibit individuals convicted of certain crimes from registering as city lobbyists for a period of 10 years. The proposed ordinance was introduced on September 7, 2022. Specifically, the proposed ordinance would ban an individual from lobbying after a conviction for any one of the following criminal offenses: bribery, misuse of public offices, extortion, falsifying records, misuse of confidential information, theft connected to a public office, and while in a public office, honest services fraud, conspiracy to commit or attempt to commit or complicity in committing any of these crimes. With regard to bribery, honest services fraud, and conspiracy, the 10-year ban would apply to public officials and employees and private individuals. If you have any questions, I, as well as Amy Toman, Deputy City Attorney, is available to address any questions you may have.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move option number one.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Ian Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 14.05. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.05 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-o-24, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending chapter three, article three, section three dash 180 of the City of Tallahassee Land Development Code, providing for building fees, providing for annual increases to the scheduled building fees, providing for conflict, for severability, and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-o-24, providing for an annual CPI increase to building fees effective October 1, 2023.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
All right. Before we get into discussion, I do want to come to the city manager on this, on this item. I know that you've received some comments from citizens via email.
Yes, sir.
You want to provide comment in the record?
Yeah, and if I could, just a little more full context on this. This is a companion piece. This is an ordinance that requires this public hearing. What this particular action does is puts in place for next fiscal year, so a year from now, beginning a year from now, an automatic CPI escalator to our building inspection fees. Previously, they had not been adjusted since 2009. This past year, we had looked at those, and consistent with other user fees, we're recommending that we put a CPI clause in so that we keep pace. At your last meeting, you adopted a resolution that raised the fees by approximately 18 percent, which, again, had not been adjusted since 2009. That information was shared by the successor, to the successor organization of the Tallahassee Builders Association, forgive me, I don't remember their new name, and another building organization. In the logic behind it, the logic was simply that in 2009, we had a couple dozen building inspectors. Today, we have approximately 40 based on demand. It is an enterprise fund. There can't be a profit mechanism in this. It has to cover only the cost, and so that's what the fees were intended to do. And John Reddick, our Growth Management Director, followed up on that information today, shared that, well-received, you know, that information that there was communication. And I think the general consensus has been an acknowledgement in the building group that the cost is one component, but time is also very valuable, and this allows us to keep pace with the demands that we have. Mr. Mayor, I hope that helps.
How do our building fees compare to the county?
Let me ask an expert. They're lower? How about that? Is that a good answer? They're lower, but how much? They're quite a bit lower, I'm sure. And we've been sensitive to trying to keep them down as much as possible, but keeping up staff and capacity to do the job of our, that we need to.
Okay. Commissioners, comment, direction?
Move staff recommendation, option number one.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Long day. Voices given.
Okay.
14.06.
Item number 14.06 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-z-21, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 264.68 acres located along Tyrone Pass between Shamrock Street North, South, East, and West, as and in the City of Tallahassee open space from Residential Preservation 1 and Residential Preservation 2 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, writing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-z-21, thereby amending the official zoning map from the Residential Preservation 1 and Residential Preservation 2 zoning districts to the open space zoning district based on the findings and conditions of the Planning Commission, information contained in the agenda item, and any evidence presented at this hearing. Any expedited disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Steve Givens. In addition, Ellis Pilgreen and Richard DeRabi are here to answer questions.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Steve Givens, 3229 Heather Hill Lane. I am the president of the Kalaran Homes Association, and here tonight representing the Kalaran Homes Association in full support of this zoning change. It will do much for our community and our neighborhood. We're very excited about the possibility of that. In addition, if this zoning passes, we would like for the city comp plan to reflect the changes accordingly, according to change. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ellis Pilgreen and Richard DeRabi here to answer questions. Otherwise, no additional speakers.
Okay. Mr. Givens brought up interesting point, Madam Attorney, about making sure that the comp plan reflects. You want to walk us through that?
Well, I think we probably do better to have staff speak to that issue.
Mr. White, thank you. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you. Right now, the future land use map for this property is residential preservation. Open space is a zoning district allowed in that land use category, so no change is required. But moving forward, especially as we go through the process of updating the land use element with a consultant, would be an opportune time to look at that and maybe consider a different land use category for the golf course. It's not required at this point, but it's definitely something we can look at.
That'd be a city issue or a city and county issue?
That would just be a city issue.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. I'll second the motion. Any further conversation? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just say really quickly, it's so much more fun when everyone's on board. So, that's all. Thank you.
Excellent. See no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have anything else coming before us formally at the public hearing?
That is the end of the public hearings.
Okay. We are on unadmitted speakers, unadmitted speakers. You'd like to speak on an unadmitted item? Now is the time. Please fill out a card, turn it in. Mr. Clark, how many speakers do we have?
I have three.
Okay.
The first is Ginger Proctor, followed by, excuse me, followed by Judy Chin.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Ginger Proctor, 1111 Brookwood Drive. Mayor Daley and Commissioners, I want to speak to you today about the city's decision to discontinue the fight against CityWalk Urban Mission. Our neighborhood has fought a two-year battle with CityWalk, and we find ourselves right back where we started, a 64-bed transitional housing facility catering to displaced persons, sex offenders, and people released from prison. Following Judge Dempsey's order, we also find out that the city has no plans to fight-
Ms. Proctor, could you pull your mic down?
Oh, can you not hear me? Is that better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Sorry. Find out that the city has no plans to fight this any further. To say that we are dismayed, discouraged, angry, and baffled is an understatement. How you could spend all this money fighting this and then throw the towel in and turn your back on our neighborhoods and businesses is beyond me. It seems our ability to be compassionate and exercise common sense has gone out the window. You must know that things will quickly go back to how they were at the beginning. That leaves us with the biggest question of all. How in the world do you plan to enforce all the different stipulations that come with this decision? What priority will our calls to TPD be given when we call? What assurance will you give our neighbors and our businesses that you have our backs in the same way it seems that you have the back of the shelter? Compassion and common sense, why can't we have both?
Proctor, thank you very much. Madam Attorney, Mr. Manager.
He's coming.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, let me start.
If y'all wouldn't mind providing comment on where we are with this. I have expressed my frustration as well with the rulings.
I thank you, Mayor. Certainly, the city has not conceded anything. What we have done is we are taking the order of the court, which we are required to do. The court has basically remanded it back to the Planning Commission, and that order will be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and I'm certain that they will follow the instructions provided by the court. But it has not been decided by the Planning Commission. That will be done in an upcoming meeting.
The other comment, Mr. Manager?
No, sir. That's what I was going to say. The next step is back to the Planning Commission. I'm not sure that date's set, but it would be later this year if that would happen. So, nothing can happen at that point. So, that's the next relevant step, and then, of course, I'm sure there's more dialogue.
Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Judy Chin, followed by Michael McBride.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Judy Chin, and I live at 1106 Brookwood Drive. And we are going to be back with a 64-bed transitional residential facility, which actually was backed by Commissioner Matlow at a fundraiser that was for the shelter, and your comments were something similar. We need more Rene Millers. We need more CityWalks. Anyway, that's while the city was fighting against the shelter and putting legal fees into it, which is going to take out of our taxpayer dollars, and you're going to have to pay attorney's fees, court reporter fees, I mean, just a whole ton of fees. And I just want to know how, when it is going to be a 64-bed transitional facility on Mahan Drive in an office building, who is going to enforce the stipulations or the recommendations made by the ALJ? Who's going to do that? Do you care about the neighbors or the neighborhoods?
Oh, okay. That is a great question, Mr. Manager. I guess the enforcement of the ALJ stipulations, Madam Attorney, does fall on the shoulders of the City of Tallahassee?
That's correct.
Okay.
Good to know.
It's our responsibility to uphold-
Because it's been, it's really been, like, I feel like the neighbor's responsibility. And you may think of me as a NIMBY. I'm just going to say one thing, but last October, or no, last August, I had a man jump my fence in the backyard and hold a person who was watering my plants and taking care of some stuff at gunpoint, or at knife point for 45 minutes on Brookwood Drive, and he didn't have a home.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Michael McBride. Mayor, that's the last speaker that I have at this time.
McBride, thank you for sticking out the entire evening with us. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is still Michael McBride, and I still live at 124 Mill Branch Road. I'm here today to propose a process improvement and present a small gift. The City Commission grants citizens a three-minute window to provide input to these esteemed proceedings. A drop in the bucket to your work, but a heartfelt millennium to those of us who stand up here and speak in front of you. When said citizens prepare to speak for 2 minutes and 58 seconds, they often leave the point of their statement to the end. However, 2 minutes and 30 seconds, an oral interruption of "you have 30 seconds left" ruins the rhythm. Taking a second to affirm what was said, then a second or more to process what was said, then at least a second of righteous indignation for being interrupted, then a second to realize your time is fleeting, and you have lost a fifth of the time remaining. So, when a citizen bears their soul to make a point to this forum, the standing procedure often sidetracks the point being made. In my personal case, the point was, some say restorative justice is soft on crime. My son says the restorative justice circle is the hardest thing he's ever done, and that's from a man serving time in a mends Florida prison. When asked what we should say about restorative justice, Connor simply said, "Tell them it worked." So, please allow me to suggest a process improvement to ensure such things are not lost in the future. Please consider changing your procedure to a subtle reminder rather than an oral interruption, a gentle nudge without besmirching the rhythm and cutting off the point, a solid but gentle reminder to wrap it up. I thought of the goad gavel and the matlock mallet as being too aggressive. So, please allow me to present a gift, in particular honor of the reigning leadership, the Daily Ding. Thank you.
Daily Ding.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. Appreciate it.
How much did it cost?
All right. Mr. Clark, do we have any, any more?
Are you going to, you got to use the bell.
No, sir.
You got, you got to use the bell. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the public hearing for this evening. We have finished all the business. Before us, it is 7:01. We stand adjourned.